So I'll give that minute update in just a second. So thank you again for your patience and thank you all for tuning in. So we do have a quorum and we will hope that Commissioner Barn will be able to either zoom in or dial in momentarily. And of course, we will continue to keep Commissioner Wilson in our thoughts and prayers. We do welcome everyone to today's Board of Commissioners meeting. This is a Zoom before the county did have to activate our COVID-19 protocol, which is why we are conducting this meeting by Zoom. And we'll have more details to share with you shortly. But at this time, I would like to go ahead and just encourage and notify everyone that this meeting is being held by video conference and Henry TV will be streaming it live online and also on Charter Spectrum, Channel 180. So at this time now, we'll ask Mr. Don Ash if he will lead us in our invocation. And then afterwards, I will lead us in our pledge of allegiance as we move through the meeting. So Mr. Ash, if you will begin.
Absolutely. Good morning. Let us pray. Father God, it is in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you for another rising of the sun, another opportunity, God. Lord, we ask you, God, to be in the midst of this COVID, God. Protect our government workers, God. Protect our public safety leaders, God. Protect our government leaders throughout this county, God, throughout this state and throughout this nation. Lord, we ask you to be in the midst of this meeting, God, our minds and heart as we focus on you, Lord. Lord, we remember those that are in the hospital suffering from COVID. Lord, we remember Commissioner Wilson, God, and his family. God, in everything we do, we will continue to give you praise and glory. It is in Christ Jesus' name we pray with all thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen, and thank you. If you would join me for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So at this time now, I will call our Henry County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We do have an announcement. All of our public planning and zoning hearings and public hearings and public comments have been postponed. We did have a public hearing included in that list. MC 20-01, which is S.K. Property Holdings II, requesting a modification to zoning conditions for properties located on Jonesboro Road at Mount Carmel. And that was to allow additional uses in District 3. We also had public hearing, RZ 20-02, Dr. Mayo's Health Investment LLC requesting a rezoning from general commercial to office institutional for property located at 931 Rock Quarry Road. And this property, again, was for an assisted living and hospice care facility in District 4. Public hearing, RZ-20-01, Mandalay Properties, requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture, a single-family residence for property located on south of Daily Mill Road. And again, the request for a single-family residential subdivision in District 3 has also been postponed. And then public hearing, MC-20-02, the Championship Martial Arts of McDonough, requests a modification for properties located at 2327 through 2351 Jonesboro Road. And that request was to allow additional uses and that was in District 2. And again, those public hearings has been postponed. Also, we have the following Department of Transportation public hearings that were advertised for this meeting and they too have been postponed. And that was for the public hearing to request the abandonment and declare certain portions of Jodeco right of way. And then also a public hearing to request the sale of a portion of Jodeco roads right of way. Those, again, have also been postponed. The public comments that had been previously advertised, the public comments for this live video conference were requested to be submitted in by yesterday at 5:00 PM. And of course, our comments were to be read into the public comment section as stated. Other items regarding the agenda today, there was a request to, I'm suggesting that we amend the agenda to move the COVID-19 protocol resolution and discussion from the manager comments and to place that right under the COVID-19 update that is going to be given by Mr. Don Ash. So I have a request to make that amendment. May I have a motion to move that item under the COVID-19 update?
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Commissioner Thomas, you're muted.
Okay, and I saw Commissioner Holmes raise his hand. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Thank you. That was a 1, 2, 3, 4 vote on that. Then there is a request to amend the agenda to add a capital financing resolution. I mean, that is to be placed after the allocation of the SPOSS for revenues. That request has been made. May I have a motion to accept that addition?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. And a second, Commissioner Thomas. Any further discussion here and non, seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. So that is four, which is all the commissioners that are here. Are there any other changes or requests to the agenda? Commissioner Clemens?
I would like to make a request to add a resolution to the agenda, giving authority to our county attorney to identify the legal procedures and to draft a resolution to remove the Confederate monument off of county's property and to work with City of McDonough for relocation or giving the statue to the city. And I just would like to add that to the agenda, authorizing our county attorney to move forward with those legal procedures.
Okay, well, we'll, so we've got that motion to have a resolution by the attorney and all that was stated. So I see a motion by Commissioner Clemens, a second by Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion? So that motion has been first and carried. Are there any discussions or comments? All in favor? And that is 4 to 0 as well. Okay, so we will add that after the capital financing.
Thank you, Chair.
Discussion. Okay, so we've had all of those amendments that have been made. We now need to accept a motion to accept the agenda with the changes of removing the public hearings and restating the public comments and also making the amendments that have just been made by the commissioner. So all in favor of accepting those, that amended agenda? Can I have a motion to accept that change?
So may.
Thomas, okay. Need a second to accept the agenda's change. Okay, Commissioner Clemens. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Okay, the agenda has been amended and changed as stated and voted upon. So we'll now move into our agenda item regarding the COVID-19 update. And we will invite up Mr. Don Ash for that update. Both Dr. Henson and Dr. Obasanji were planning to be here, but there's been some recent developments. So again, we'll allow Mr. Ash to bring those updates. So Mr. Ash, if you will present, please.
Good morning, Chair. If I could get access to share screen.
Okay.
Good morning, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning on a COVID update. A lot of, this is the weekly presentation we give to our management team. Let's get directly into the numbers and talk about it. And I will be sending the commission, there's a hard copy of this as well. It should be coming to you in just a second. As of July 7th, COVID cases in the state of Georgia is 95,005 16 with 28 60 deaths, hospitalizations 11,775. ICU beds are 2,429. As it relates to Henry County specifically, our COVID cases are 14 60. Our deaths are 33. Several areas we look at and focus, but on Mondays, we get a general report on our COVID cases by zip code areas. So if you look at the numbers as it relates to them, Ellenwood had 40 cases, Hampton 216, Jonesboro 9, Locust Grove 163, McDonough 637, Rex 6, Stockbridge 360. Unknown location is 19. A second point of reference we look at is our specimen collections through our collection site. Last week, we collected 514 specimens in Henry County at the Heritage Type Test Site. We also look at our long-term care facilities. Laurel Park and Stockbridge had 11 cases, one death, seven staff affected. Mount Carmel Personal Care in Hampton, 17 cases, four deaths, two staff. Westbury of McDonough, which is our largest facility, has zero cases, zero death, but four staff members affected. The last thing I'm going to talk to you about this morning, very important as it relates to Piedmont Henry Medical Center. Total patients with COVID-19 are 44. 16 of those are in ICU. 28 are non-ICU patients, one pending under investigation. But I did notice this morning when I got a report from Piedmont Henry, they have downsized a lot of their operations. So currently, they're only sitting with four ICU beds. But I can tell you that they have ramped up their operations. They've reinstituted their incident command center. And I believe in the future, they'll probably be reallocating some more ICU beds. I want to go to a slide, a graph I want to show you, show you guys. On March 17th, we started out with two cases of COVID-19 in Henry County. It trends all the way out to the 6th with 14 50 cases. The things, the two things I want to make reference to you guys and notice this week, this morning is, on last week, from June to 28th to July 5th, we had a total increase of 21.3% in total cases, which was roughly about 185. But if you think about this total, I want to share with you, from June 8th until June 7th, we had an increase of 90.35% cases. On June 6th, we had roughly 767 cases. On June, July 7th, we had 1,560 cases. That's an increase of 90% in a month's total. And as it relates to deaths, that's a 50% increase in deaths as well. Wanted to share that with you guys. Wanted to also mention to you. Get out of here. Also wanted to mention to you guys several things we're working on. We're working on a mask initiative. The mask initiative is for all government agencies, municipal and county government inside our structures as well as into the public. We finally received a shipment of 40-plus thousand masks. And we're working with the municipal governments and vulnerable needs to get those masks out to all the general public. For focusing on daycare center, dialysis centers, and our vulnerable populations so that. Still want to encourage our public that you can get tested for COVID-19 at the Heritage Senior Center located at 1050 Florence McGarrett Boulevard. The number for that is, we have it posted everywhere, but I'll share that number. Typically, results are coming back in 48 to 72 hours. And this is my update, and I just want to remind our public, continue to practice those good things, hand washing, sanitizing, social distancing. Most importantly, wear a mask when out in public. Thank you so much. I'll take any questions you have for me this morning.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, I see that you raised your hand.
Yes, good morning, everyone. And thank you so much for that report. It is alarming to see the change in numbers that's continued to go up around the nation, especially in Georgia. But my question is, is it possible to get another testing site closer to the Stockbridge area? I went out to Heritage Center and it's kind of a hidden jewel back there. Nice place and everything, but it is very well hidden back in the curve, I should say. So my question is, what can we do to get another site in another location in Henry County so that more people can be tested easier?
Absolutely, Commissioner. In conversation with the deputy county manager and the county management team and our team, we are looking and working through public health to get a secondary testing site. We did find that the test site we did in most part was a very popular site and well-attended. So we will continue to work with public health to get that secondary spot site tested, open and operational.
And, Madam Chair. I do want to state that there are some churches that are willing to allow their facilities to be location sites for you. So if you need location sites, I can help you with that. I've had churches contact me and say, hey, we'll be willing to be a site for testing if you need a site here, because they're not using their sanctuaries right now. They all have gyms, not all of them, but most of them have some type of gym of community facility. And they're willing to be a testing site for you. So if you need that, those sites or places, let me know. I'd be glad to help you.
Absolutely, Commissioner. I will reach out to you offline and try to coordinate some of those logistical sites for public health and our team to evaluate.
Thank you.
Hey, are there any additional questions for Commissioner Thomas? I mean, for Don Ash. Well, just a couple of things, and thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for that question. We definitely are continuing to advocate with the Department of Health for additional testing sites. Also, the masks are going to be the key factor that we encourage everyone to continue to support and spread the word about, especially commissioners, on your personal pages, if you can share that update. I would say that we, we had, you know, sent out the public service announcements on last week primarily because we knew the potential, what was going to happen over the July 4th weekend with family and friends fellowship. And but we were very concerned about the capacity of our hospital. That is the key factor that is also one of the key drivers as to one of the key things that we focus on. And so as Don has reported, you know, we've been averaging prior to the last couple of weeks about 15 or so COVID items, issues or diagnosis. And it was seemingly to flatten out, but it quickly took a turn as with everyone else. So again, we are continuing to partner with the Department of Health and also the hospital, make sure that they get what they need as well. So Commissioner Thomas, and then we'll come to Commissioner Clemens.
My question is, in relationship to the use of a mask, is there anything that we can put forth to almost mandate that certain masks be worn in certain areas? And I guess that would be a question that needs to go to Patrick because I'm noticing where people are doing that now in different parts of the country, they're requiring a mask in public areas. Can we require a mask to be worn in public areas in Henry County? And another thing, I've also went into some businesses who have yet to put up the petitions, the Plexiglas petitions for their cashiers. And because the cashiers want to keep their jobs, and I'm having a conversation with them. I said, your company is not providing protection for you, so they know they won't do it. And I said, okay, let me talk about this with the Board of Commissioners. What can we do to mandate these small businesses do something to protect their cashiers? Because some have done it voluntarily, but others have not. And that's not good when these people are trying to keep their jobs, to keep their livelihood going. What can we do? And I guess, again, that's a question that Patrick would have to answer.
So Patrick, if you'll, I'm responding. I've got some comments as well regarding Commissioner Thomas's question. Mr. Joxetter.
So both of those suggestions would be appropriate mitigation measures. However, we still have the governor's order which limits our ability as a local government to enact or enforce any order unless it is prescribed or imposed. The governor has not required either of those mitigation measures. And as a result, because of his order, we lack the authority to impose either one of those measures.
Okay, and my thoughts, Commissioner Thomas. I've, you know, had a question about, you know, the mandate of face masks. But at the end of the day, this is about personal responsibility. And it's for personal responsibility for us to care about those that are around us. And I would even say the question I would have, how would you even enforce something like that? But that's a big question that we would have. But that's why you saw the mask campaign. I mean, that's why you see us encouraging to wear the face mask. And I would also say that's why we as leaders are going to have to be the example as well is when we're out and about and around others, we need to continue to be the example too as well. But again, I just, the more and more I think about this, the thing that has been consistent from day one about COVID-19 is the same message. Wear face covering, practice six feet of social distancing. Don't get in large crowds and keep your hands sanitized. So I just hope that people will continue to do what has been asked.
In response to that, Madam Chair, I like to say, I know it is personal responsibility, but I'm watching small children who don't have the, have the option of saying to mama and daddy, I want a mask, but they have, they're in stores and what have you. And how will we enforce it? We can have a campaign to the different stores to say, no mask, no service. We can find some ways to be encouraging beyond saying personal responsibility. And I know adults can say, I'm not going to do it. But when you're pulling two and three children into an area and they don't have that choice, we need to take another step forward and say, no service, no mask. And maybe we can get the retailers to sign upon that type of a campaign. And we provide the signs to them to put that up and say, this is what we require for you to have service in our area. I'm just saying to you, it's, it's not enough to watch us suffer because of the stupidity of a few. And maybe we might have to put something there in place to say, we want to make you uncomfortable in your stupidity. Because some people know to do it, but they choose not to do it. And this is their will saying, I'm not going to do, okay. You don't have to do, but you're using up our hospital space. You're putting in jeopardy my child who serves as the first responder as well and some of you guys as well, and the children who don't have a choice. So I would like for us to see if we can do another campaign and get the retailers to join us in saying, no mask, no service. And let's see how they deal with that and go from there.
I think that's a good idea about the no mask, no service, and so that is to be noted. The other thing, I think that you made a question about regarding the businesses that are operating without the safety measures that are in the executive orders, those need to be reported to the Department of Health because that is how those are to be addressed. If they're not following the governor's orders, that's what the whole process is about. So I appreciate you bringing that to the attention. Okay, I saw Commissioner Clemens and then Commissioner Holmes.
Just to reiterate what Commissioner Thomas has said, I did do an email in my official capacity encouraging businesses to require masks in their stores. So as a board, I think it is our duty as the executive team, Commissioner Thomas, I agree with you, that we could do a resolution, make a statement, make a formal collective statement that we, as a board, are encouraging every business that receives a business license from this county to require masks in their stores. So Commissioner Thomas, we do have the authority to do that. We don't have the authority to mandate it, but we can, we do have the authority to encourage them to do so as a state of emergency that the governor has declared that they should do this if they are a business in Henry County. So if the chair would permit us to do that today, we can make that statement collectively, vote to see if we collectively agree that all businesses in Henry County should require masks upon entry into their businesses. Then we'll have it not just from me, but all of us collectively. And then we can disseminate that by sharing it, as our chair has said, with our community. And the community will get it out for us. Also, our tax commissioner's office can also disseminate that through emails to all of the businesses that this board has taken a stance and suggesting that every business in Henry County requires a mask upon entry. So if it's the will of the board, we can do that, Chair, and then have our county attorney to address it.
Yeah, let's have our county attorney to address it. And then, of course, we'll hear from Commissioner Holmes as well.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You certainly.
Patrick.
Go ahead.
I'm just, I was just going to say, you know, this is, it's a tough topic. I mean, we're living in a county where there's about 240,000 citizens. On any given day, there are thousands of more people traveling through Henry County and stopping in Henry County to shop at our retailers than live in the county. So even if, even if we tried to put together a resolution, it's going to be very tough to enforce. So, you know, I'm willing to go whatever the board, you know, whatever direction it wants to go in, but that's going to be really tough.
Yeah, we're not talking about mandating it. We're just saying that we're encouraging, because we know we can't mandate it. We know that we don't have the authority to overstep the governor's ordinance. But we can say that we're suggesting that every business request that masks are required for entry. We're only saying that we want to support that there is a pandemic. We agree that there is one. We want to encourage businesses to do that, not that we're mandated. I think a lot of the businesses respect the will of this board, the leadership of this board. And we're only saying that we want to suggest that they require it, not mandate it, not make it mandatory. I mean, because, because we can't. We would like to, but because we can't, I think, as our attorney has said, we're not, we don't have the authority to make it mandatory. But we do have the authority to encourage them to request it.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Joxetter, will you speak to this request?
And I think Commissioner Clemens has clarified it. There's certainly nothing wrong with the board adopting a resolution urging compliance with the governor's order and urging additional compliance. But it would be worth noting that we would not have any enforcement over those recommendations. It would be you exercising your role as community leaders and speaking with your authoritative voices to give some guidance to the community that hopefully they'll follow. But we will not have any means of enforcement.
Okay, so thank you for that discussion. So what we'll do now, in light of that discussion, is request a motion to amend the agenda to have, to vote on a proposed resolution regarding the encouragement to wear face masks by businesses. Okay, I see Commissioner Thomas saying, okay, I do want to amend the agenda. Commissioner Clemens, a second. Any further discussion? And I see Commissioner Barn has just joined the call. And so Commissioner Barn, right now, the Board of Commissioners are discussing to amend the agenda to add a resolution that would encourage businesses to say, no mask, no service, or to require masks when they are entering or being serviced by their businesses. So that's the motion that has been on the table to amend the agenda and second it. So all in favor again for that? So that's C4, Commissioner Barn, wish your vote on amending the agenda to vote on, to vote on that resolution. Commissioner Barn, are you there? Okay, well, we have a majority vote on that to amend the agenda to, for that resolution. So at this time now, we will now take a vote. Accept a motion if you clarify the resolution again.
Oh, you'd like for me to do it again? I'm sorry.
Well, it was Commissioner, well, whoever. I know, but Commissioner Clemens recommended.
Go ahead, Commissioner Thomas. Go ahead.
We would like to have the agenda, we'd like to have added to the agenda a resolution. encouraging businesses in Henry County to mask up for safe services to stop the spread of COVID. And um, it would be just a campaign to support the fact that it needs to take place. And we understand we cannot mandate it, but it will show leadership in trying to support and mitigate the spread of COVID.
Okay.
And to add the um, executive order that's in place for those businesses that are not following the executive order. To encourage them to adhere to the governor's executive order.
Okay, so um, County Attorney, I know you'll be drafting the order. Um, did you capture all that was made in that motion? Okay, can you restate?
So as I understand it, the, the resolution will have two parts. One part will be to encourage everyone to follow the recommendations of the governor's order. And number two will be to urge all businesses to acquire masks of their employees and all customers entering their premises.
Okay, alright, so uh, we've got that uh, motion um, by Commissioner Thomas, there's a second. So Commissioner Clemens, um, any further discussion? Commissioner Barm, are you there? Okay, okay, so we've had a motion and a second and further discussion, all in favor of that resolution, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, that is a four zero and could not hear Commissioner Barm. Okay, well, thank you and thank you all for that discussion, because this COVID nineteen is very serious. Um, and that leads us now into the resolution um, that I requested um, the county attorney to um, to draft for our Board of Commissioners. Um, basically, I've requested him to bring before this board a resolution that will encourage us within um, the Henry County to develop a pandemic corrective assessment and action plan for our administrative cert, our offices, our courts and other related facilities. Um, the reason we're having this Zoom call is because we were um, exposed potentially to um, a positive test of COVID nineteen. Um, the, the county management team has done a phenomenal job in setting up protocol. But uh, again, that protocol needs to um, actually be uh, adhered to. And more importantly, if there were any gaps, it needs to be revisited. Um, so that again, that we're doing our best, even internal, and we just spoke about a plan to um.
Yeah, here.
Okay, can you hear?
Okay, so your audio and video are all.
Can you um, mute your phone, Commissioner Barm? Okay, thank you. And so um, the, the resolution that I'm suggesting is that we go back and look at um, what gaps we need to address with our, our current protocol uh, in all of our uh, facilities that are related here to the government. But we also um, ask the county manager to revisit our current workplace plans and to make, help us to think long term regarding telework empowerment. And then at the end of the day, I just think that we need to have an evaluation of the effectiveness of our current um, procedures and protocol, not just for COVID nineteen, but also for any pandemic that is a health risk to everyone else. So um, I'll pause there and see if there are any questions or comments from the board regarding this proposed resolution. Okay, I'm not seeing um, any questions or comments. So at this time, I'll open the floor for a motion to approve this resolution.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, and I think I saw a second from, hand from Commissioner Thomas. Are there any further discussions or comments?
On the, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The only thing I would like to ask that when we, uh, when the county manager and her team review this, that'd be emphasized that we have to abide by it as well.
Amen.
And as you stated, that uh, we're here because we did not have all the information that we needed to make sure that we can protect ourselves and continue to lead this county. So as we do this, and as you do, as you stated, we have to abide by it as county commissioners. And I need to feel like that my co-county commissioners would not um, carelessly expose me and I would not carelessly expose them to anything unnecessary and not share that information with me. Nor take for granted if I choose, quote unquote, not to wear a mask or not to wear protection, that they will say, okay, um, give me the option of not being in their presence. So I'm simply saying, it won't work if we expect other people to do it and we not do it. We have to commit to doing it as well.
Well, very good, and I thank you for that, because there is a segment under the current COVID routes plans and so forth. Commissioner Thomas, it is specifically states that let's also have been identify specific failures. And we've got to identify how we're going to enforce the policies that, that are out there as well. So that gets back to the accountability that you're talking about. So I totally agree with you on that. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
I think a major question is still, um, what do we do about those folks that are asymptomatic? I mean, you know, the protocol will not um, defend against the person who has COVID but does not know they have COVID and can potentially spread COVID, COVID amongst the entire um, county. So what are we gonna do about um, that issue?
That, that, that's a good question, and that's why we, those are things that the protocol needs to review, be reviewed and addressed. I also say that's why um, it is recommended that we move more towards a teleworking type of environment to minimize it. But again, we've got several um, items such as the one regarding the asymptomatic individuals, what's the protocol for that? So again, that's why we've got to get a review of everything, what worked well, what is not working well. And thank you for that question, because that is one that we'll ask them to include in their review. Okay, let's see, uh, is that it, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, on Commissioner Clemens.
What I think, uh, and Don, if you're still there, you can address this. Um, I know that we can't um, you know, override the judges, I mean, the governor's executive orders. But Patrick, we should be able to mandate that inside of our government buildings that uh, we can require masks, because that is the only thing that we can do for the asymptomatic. Commissioner Holmes is um, everybody should act as if they got it. Um, and, and once the world starts to realize that the only way you're going to stop the spread is everybody needs to conduct themselves as if they have it. Um, that's the only way we're going to be able to do it. So my suggestion um, is that we require um, it is, it is, I think, uh, what is it? A home rule, we should be able to require that inside of Henry County government buildings that masks are required, uh, period. And in that way, if you're asymptomatic, you still protect others. So Patrick, uh, I would like to know what you have to say. I think what the chair has put in place is great, but if we don't require everybody to have on a mask and those asymptomatic people are just going to continue to infect the building.
Madam Chair, could I also go speak about it?
Um, you may, and then we'll uh, end with Patrick, because I want to hear from him as well, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, and this is a topic we're to discuss on the county manager's comments um, about the COVID preparing for that. And Commissioner Holmes, you're, you hit it on the head, the asymptomatic patients are a moving target. This whole pandemic is a moving target, because we've never been through, been through the uh, uh, anything like this before. So we're actually charting new territory, and that's why we're probably on plan number twenty one uh, as it changes, as the CDC changes, as our district health uh, advisement changes uh, uh, very frequently. The asymptomatic issue is number one, or number two is transparency. Is being transparent, open to acknowledge your teammates that you have issues or, or you don't need to come to work, or you shouldn't be in an environment. What we've done on last Wednesday, when um, it kind of uh, came to a head, is we've done, I feel Team Henry has done a great job of putting the barriers up for our outside personnel. People coming into our environment uh, and, and being behind a plexiglass, wearing masks that we require. Um, being in certain areas, you can't come into the back of the buildings where you used to be able to. We've done a really good job. Where we have to work on is the asymptomatic person as an employee here who's been out and been infected and brought it back into our, our building uh, unknowingly. As Don mentioned earlier, our, our wear the mask campaign, Commissioner Clemens, is going to your point, is we're definitely hitting that, we're putting out more communications, we've put it out some. If you're in a room with someone now, uh, we want to limit that, but we want to make sure you have a mask on, bottom line. I'm in a big room with nobody in here, if I had anybody, I'd be requiring the, the team to have a mask on, period, uh, moving forward. I would tell you as a governor, we got kind of complacent over, over the last, and you can see Henry County roads today, the traffic jams out here in front of the building, is that uh, we're, we're trying to get back to normal, people are thinking we're back to normal, but we still have a, a invisible uh, uh, enemy out there uh, hitting us. And how do we fight the asymptomatic? And what we've done is come up with three separate locations of operation. For example, our continuity of operation plan phase two um, is that how do we have people in the same office that might infect each other and have to shut that whole essential function down? We've opened a site in Locust Grove at the convent center and at Heritage in the big community room there, where our, our team has put up workstations. We're migrating our team members that have essential functions. So if one team is infected by asymptomatic person, we have a backup team offsite, so we don't have to shut down that function. It's the same as a teleworking, basically, we're teleworking from a different county location. So we have three separate teams that work as one in different locations that never come in contact with each other during a work period. Just in case one team becomes infected, we can move the next team up and make sure we have a continuity of operation for county business. And also try to protect our, our, our personnel and uh, discourage any large gatherings, meetings uh, of that sort. So just to clarify how we're moving forward today and, and how we um, plan to move forward in the future uh, with that. Uh, and, but Commissioner, asymptomatic is that invisible person, you don't know and they don't know, and that's what we're trying to fight.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So Patrick, um, Mr. Jox better, will you speak towards um, the um, the requirement of the mask, which we're pretty much are already doing in the government agencies? But I just want to get your official word on that as we continue this conversation.
Yes, so the, there's no prohibition on us managing our own properties. We, we have the right to manage our properties and to impose rules and restrictions and regulations for those entering our properties, uh, all of our properties. So those measures have already been put in place, I understand, and there's no limitation on our ability to continue them.
Okay, so, okay, so Commissioner Clemens and then Commissioner Holmes.
So in the uh, resolution that Chair Wood, that you just brought to us, um, uh, detailing specifically of the plans that you wanted to see, I would like for you to add that it is mandatory in Henry County government our buildings, uh, definitely our staff. Um, I think Commissioner Thomas hit on it, um, you know, you know, very good that we were exposed as a result of county staff um, or county employees, uh, leaders coming in and not wearing masks. I think that everybody should be required to wear a mask, especially since we're dealing with this asymptomatic issue right now. Um, I think that'll protect, and, and it just enhances what our county manager and our deputy county manager is trying to do. Um, we just need to require that everybody, if you're in contact, I mean, if you're in your office by yourself, of course, you don't have to have on your mask. But if you're walking through uh, these hallways, if you're in a meeting with someone, if there's one other person with you, you are required to have on a mask.
Okay, um, okay, thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
Yeah, Ken, um, well, there's been a number of reports over the last week or so regarding uh, people that work within the county government um, contract, uh, contracting um, COVID. Um, can somebody give us a report on the numbers? I know um, there was an issue with the judicial, um, judicial system. And I've heard of some other numbers within the administration building. So can somebody give us an overall report, ensure that, you know, people that are working within our facilities or our government are, you know, continue to be safe?
Yes, Commissioner Holmes, we can provide that, I'll, I'll get that information for you today. And just so you know, we do have a, uh, our, our protocol, we do have a known uh, person that reports being uh, uh, positive for COVID virus. We do meet with that department and make sure we're very transparent with employees and make sure we take care of who's close contact, who needs to be tested and make sure we, we, we do uh, have that, that afforded to each employee in, in our team. Uh, and we'll continue to do that. But again, again, the transparency, make sure that we're notified, but we'll definitely get that information to, to the entire board this afternoon.
Okay, um, and so County Attorney, the only other thing I, I think we need to clarify is um, at what point will this um, requirement of the mask expire? And I don't know what that needs to be tied to, but again, that may be part of the recommendations that come back um, to um, to this board. But I definitely hear clearly, and I do accept um, the recommendation that um, that it is required um, for Henry County government, um, whoever, staff, employees, whoever, that mask will be required in, in county government offices. I do agree that we just still need to emphasize the point that the, the protocol needs to be followed. Um, as the, as the other point, and, and this, this resolution does speak a little bit to that. But um, again, would like to know, uh, you know, in the future from the county management team, what are our recommendations on how that enforcement looks like? So um, given the fact that we've had a motion and a second, um, are there any further discussions? Because we already hear that to this current resolution, what we'll add is that um, it will be mandatory for masks to be worn in Henry County government offices. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please raise by signal of raising your hand. Okay, that looks five zero, okay, thank you. And thank you all for all taking that very serious and a very good comments and discussions. Okay, we'll now move into the next agenda item, which is regarding the um, I seventy-five corridor coalition. And Mr. Sam Baker, um, will make that presentation.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
To give an update on the I seventy-five central corridor coalition at the request of Chair Wood. I have a PowerPoint presentation, please give me a moment to share my screen with you. Chair Wood, do you see my PowerPoint presentation?
We uh, we do, um, it's uh, not in the view um, this state, but we can see it on the screen, yes, sir. You need to get it into the presentation mode, the slide mode.
How about now?
Um, it's not working, but you can go ahead and proceed.
So um, I seventy-five central corridor coalition is a nonprofit organization formed in twenty eighteen to promote a smart growth uh, in the area along I seventy-five between Atlanta and Macon, bonded in the west of by US forty-one and on the east of by US twenty-three. Uh, the coalition has the six county members, and they are Spalding, Henry, Butts, Lamar, Monroe and Bibb. And there are six municipal members, uh, and they are Griffin, McDonough, Jackson, Forsyth, Barnesville and Macon. There is a, um, federal transportation legislation.
Mr. Baker, but your, your slides are not advancing on the screen share. Okay, well, if you can just go ahead and speak, um, apparently we're having some technical difficulty, so we'll, we'll listen to the presentation.
The current federal transportation legislation, uh, is uh, called Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, or in short, FAST Act. This FAST Act is uh, coming to an end on September thirtieth, twenty twenty, uh, along with uh, funding for it. And uh, what this means is uh, that for Congress to uh, authorize any funding from October first uh, and on, um, the Congress has to come up with a new transportation legislation or extend the current FAST Act. So Congress is working on a new transportation legislation right now. Uh, it's uh, being called an, the invest- It's being called the Invest in America Act, specifically in the House of Representatives. The House passed this last week. This proposed act invests $500 billion in transportation over the next five years. And it proposes increased investment in rail and in Amtrak. This House bill is now, is expected to go to the Senate. Against this backdrop of Congress acting on a new transportation legislation and with potential increased investment on rail, there was extensive discussion in the last two meetings of the I-75 corridor coalition on a potential new passenger rail service between Atlanta and Macon. There was no specific discussion whether such passenger rail service would be commuter, commuter rail service like MARTA, where a train goes every couple of miles and drops a passengers, picks up new passengers, or will it be more like inner-city rail service like Amtrak? And my suggestion to the coalition was that for this idea to proceed farther, we need to have the state back this idea. Without the states backing this, proposal will not go very far. In addition, I shared with the coalition that there already exists a railroad track between Atlanta and Macon. It is owned by Norfolk Southern. It provides freight rail service. It would be a whole lot cheaper if this railroad track can be shared for a passenger rail service rather than building a new railroad track parallel to it. So in conclusion, while the Congress is developing a new transportation legislation, there is an opportunity for us to influence the next federal transportation law. The Invest in America Act is only a bill so far in the House of Representatives. So far, there has been little action taken in the US Senate on transportation legislation. So I'll just pose a question for, to facilitate a discussion. What is the interest, demand, or feasibility of passenger rail service between Atlanta and? In addition, Henry County used to be a dues paying member of the I-75 central corridor coalition in 2018. Right now, we are not a dues paying member. A resolution has been drafted allowing Henry County to rejoin this coalition and pay the required $500 annual dues. And staff suggest that the board approve this resolution and rejoin the coalition. And that ends my presentation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Baker. The reason I've asked Mr. Baker to bring this back to the board is because when this coalition first organized, we did participate, but they did not have a clarity about their focus. And as they now have determined that it is truly focused on a lot of the passenger rail from Atlanta to Macon, that I felt that Henry County needed to definitely continue his voice or to have a voice. I've attended the meetings often, but have not participated much because our board didn't think at the time back in 2018 or even 2019, when we chose not to renew our membership because it did not have a clear focus. But again, it is something that is of interest, and Henry County needs to have a seat at the table. The membership that it has does require or will allow me to serve on that board and to have a voice with the coalition, but it also, I will tell you that Mr. Baker has already given some guidance to this coalition already and has already served in a great way with his expertise. So that's why I wanted to, again, revisit this with the board and request support for Henry County to have a seat on this board. So I think, see Commissioner Holmes, that may have had some comments.
Yeah, this isn't the first time that this discussion about rail from Atlanta to Macon has come up. I think Congressman Scott actually put in, put millions of dollars into the pot back in the early 2000s for that to happen. And from my recollection, everybody was on board but Henry County. Getting back to this organization, I think the organization is great. However, I don't think that we need to be a part of that organization financially to be part of the plan to run rail from, from Atlanta to Macon. When we were going to those meetings a couple of years ago, the focus was mainly on industrial. There was some focus on the, the, the truck lanes as well as the inland port. So given the fact that Henry County is trying to move in a totally different direction, I don't really see a need of us investing any dollars in the organization because if that legislation is ever passed, we are the, we are the elephant in the room and the federal government and the state will have to come to Henry County in order to run rail from, from Atlanta to Macon.
Okay, any other comments from any of the other commissioners? Well, in response to your thoughts, Commissioner Holmes, I agree that the, we've missed some opportunities prior to this group. I do agree that Henry County still needs to focus on its direction as it relates to transit and transportation. But I also say that we need to have our voices heard. I do want to be able to represent Henry County in the votes and how to shape this in the best interest of what this board has agreed to. And because there is a great focus on this mission south of, from Atlanta, from McDonald to Macon, I just do agree that Henry County needs to have a voting voice on this organization, just like we need to continue to have and represent our voices at the ATL and at the ARC as well. So that's, again, why I brought it back, because to me, it's a clear focus. Transportation is still a major issue for us, and making the rail, I would, this rail from Macon to Atlanta is something that I still believe that we should have, have our voices heard and to be an active participant of. So are there any other questions or thoughts from the board? Okay, well, I, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Thomas, your voice, you need to unmute your.
Just to get a clarification, we are now representing, you said ACRA?
ATL.
I'm sorry.
You mean the, the ARC?
I'm sorry, I said ACRA, I'm sorry. ARC, the ATL. Is there any other transportation group out there beyond those two that we represented on now?
I'll let Mr. Baker kind of also elaborate, but we do have Greta, the Georgia Regional Transit Authority, and we have Mr. JT Williams, who's representing there. On the ATL, keep in mind that Henry County did not have a direct person that is represented in the district of the ATL. So we have to work with Commissioner Felicia. And I can't remember her name right.
Warner Robner.
Warner. Because she is the district representative. The difference in what this organization does, both the ATL and the ARC are with the metro Atlanta area, metro region, and then this one is south, so it's outside of the jurisdictions of the ATL and the ARC. And Henry County is somewhat in the middle. So if we think about, you know, trying to tie the two or from the metro region to outside metro region, especially along I-75, that's why, again, we're recommending, I'm recommending that, that we join this one because it's not, it's not a metro group, it's outside, but we're still yet connected. So I'll see if Mr. Baker, do you have any additional thoughts about other transportation organizations that Henry County is part of or should be a part of?
Oh, we attend any meetings that we get invitations from the Georgia Department of Transportation. Earlier this year, I attended a workshop organized by GDOT on June State's Rail Plan Update. Georgia DOT is in the process of updating Georgia's rail plan, and it has some recommendations that affect Henry County. And so while we are not a formal member, we were invited to attend their workshop to give our input.
Okay.
And the reason why I ask, because I wanted to know how we're being represented in other groups. How we're being represented in other groups in reference to transportation? Because the transportation issues here in Henry County has to be addressed. But I don't want to be on the sideline when there's discussion about what's going to go through this county. And I also think if indeed we have the ARC, the ATL, Greta, and the 75 corridor, that we should have our director represent us now so that we can understand exactly how all these things tie together and not just have man in chair, I understand you represent us in a lot of things. But I'm assuming that now some of this stuff can be shifted over to our director of transportation so that he can constantly keep us informed and show us how these different boards tie together and how they support one another. Because my question would be, how effective is this 75 corridor board? How effective have they been? Have they really been doing anything? Are they just meeting? How, have they been able to influence anything? Are they doing any type of lobbying? I'd like to know what are they doing besides just talking about this? Or have they been dormant for the past two years?
So let me address some things, and then I'll let Mr. Baker maybe give his impressions about the effectiveness of this organization. Of course, I do, I'm really glad to have Mr. Baker here as our transportation director. And yes, he needs to be the center point of contact for just about every transportation initiative that's out there. The bylaws of the ARC is based on who has the opportunity to sit in those seats. And it's the same thing with this I-75 corridor coalition. Their bylaws basically say that the chairs and the mayors are the ones that represent on that board. Of course, if the bylaws were different, I have no problems. I don't care who sits on the board. I just wanted to make sure that Henry County gets the representation and the voice, because we did miss an opportunity. Some, it was about 10 years ago, when actually Henry County did not have the right voice sitting at the table. So but anyways, regarding the effectiveness of this I-75 coalition corridor, Mr. Baker, given you've been attending probably more of the meetings than I have over the last, I think, couple of weeks, just because the focus has been on COVID. So if you'll give your thoughts about the effectiveness of this organization and why you recommend that we actually participate.
Well, Commissioner Thomas, my impression is that Chair Wood, being the chair of Henry County Commission, carries a lot more weight than I do. So I would like to see that Chair Wood, if her time allows, that she continues to participate, and I will certainly join her. And then I give my input that I may have. This coalition's overall goal is something I like, that promoting smart growth, which means that transit-oriented development as opposed to development that's more car-oriented and promotes more driving. So this central goal that development that will promote economic development and reduce lives on automobile and more compact development that uses less resources is something that I like. Now, any, with a particular proposal such as a rail service between Atlanta and Macon, we can have more discussion among us whether this is something that would benefit Henry County. And what I'm really getting at is if it's inner-city truck service, where you get on a train in Atlanta and you just ride through Henry County without stopping and get off a station in Macon, does that benefit Henry County versus a commuter rail service where it's more like MARTA train service and it goes through Henry County and stops and picks up passengers? That may be more beneficial to Henry County. So we are not done at that level of detail yet. But the general concept of a passenger rail service will be an enhancement to the transportation service that Georgia has. So it would be a good idea for, if Henry County is at the table in this discussion.
Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Holmes after Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Thomas, any other questions or thoughts?
Well, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Holmes, because I'm learning about the board. So it's very hard for me to give a lot of information. Right now, I'm asking questions about all of them. So I would definitely like to hear more input from them to help guide me as to how I think Henry County needs to participate.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Holmes?
I just want to say that any plan for rail around the metro Atlanta, around, around metro Atlanta is going to include Henry County. It has nothing to do with this organization. While I think it's great that, that they're meeting, we are part of the Atlanta region. They're not. They need us. We don't need them. So I don't mind sending a representative to their meetings, but I don't think there is a need for this county to be wasting money in this organization because it's not going to benefit us at all.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Commissioner Thomas? I shared those same sentiments that you have when I first heard about the organization. I think that the organization is very heavy about the, the truck lanes, the 75 truck lanes that's coming up through 75. The reason that I wanted to make sure that we had representation, because I was going to hold our representative accountable to make sure that whatever they're doing as far as truck stops and truck lanes bypass Henry County and stay south. So I think it's good that we have a representative there. We just have to make sure that the representative represents the board and the wheel of the community. I think that when we talked about it before, I think our chair was very adamant about that where the truck lanes and all that stuff was going to happen was below Henry County, and she understood our position of what we wanted to see in our corridors. So we just, like you said, we have to just stay in tune with whoever's on the board, making sure that we're getting the reports, which we have been when they have met. And I think Commissioner Holmes even attended a couple of the meetings that they had. And we're all welcome to attend. So I would encourage you, Commissioner Thomas, that even though our chair goes, you're still welcome, and our chair is not in her head. You can still go and listen in and know what's happening with that board.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Barm, I think you had your hand. Okay, Commissioner Barm, I need some help unmuting his phone. If the host can unmute him.
I think we got it. Are we there?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I've attended several of these meetings myself, and I think they're very productive. And I think it's really a small price to pay to have a voice from Henry County on this board. And I would totally support us moving forward. I mean, this I-75 runs right through the heart of Henry County. And we may agree or disagree, but we definitely need some representation on this board to share what's Henry County's thoughts on. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
Chair Wood, I would ask you a question. To participate in this coalition, do we have to pay a fee or can we participate without paying a fee? Do you know?
We can participate, meaning we can give questions and thoughts, but when it comes down to voting on their matters and what they do or the influence from Henry County, if we are not a, you know, a member, then we will not vote. That's why I've not voted when I've sat there at those meetings. Okay, any other questions or thoughts? Okay, well, I've brought the resolution, so I'll make the motion. Well, I'll, I'll just do what I think is best. I'll open the floor for a motion to approve. Okay, Commissioner Barm makes the motion. Is there a second?
Chair Wood, I have a question about it. Are we making a motion to pay money or we take, make a motion for you to continue to represent us?
The resolution, as it stands today, says that I will participate and we will pay the $500 so that I will be able to vote while sitting on that coalition.
Okay.
And it's reevaluated every year. That's why we didn't do it last year. Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, I've got a second by Commissioner Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, county clerk, I saw four commissioners raise their hand and one opposed. All right, thank you for those discussions and questions. We'll now move into the next item, which relates to our. We'll now move into the next item, which relates to our county manager comments. So at this time, we'll invite up our deputy county manager, Mr. Brad Johnson, to present any comments and updates to the board. We've already covered the COVID nineteen protocol, so.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning again, commissioners and viewing public. This morning, I just want to touch base a little bit on the CARES Act and give you an update as requested at previous meeting. About where we stand and what Henry County has received for the CARES. The county continues to become aware of federal grant funding that could benefit the county and its residents and business owners. Designated by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. Specifically, the county anticipates receiving funding as a supplement to the Community Development Block Grant, our C D B G funding program. From U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, mostly for the county. Mostly recently, the county has seen notice that supplemental funding from U S Department of Treasury could become available also. Both funding programs can be used to assist residents in rental mortgage utility payments to prevent eviction and foreclosure. And provide emergency assistance to small local businesses. Unlike the C D B G grant funding, the U S Department of Treasury can also be used to meet some county payroll expenses and unemployment insurance costs that we've incurred. So at this time, we're considering all options and applicable restrictions. The key is there's a lot of restrictions that we're going through right now. The team is making sure through our grant team and our finance team and our community development team that we're hitting all the marks. At times, this money kind of just is sent, but it does have some restrictions. And we are looking forward to bringing the resolution to the next meeting. To how we can support small business, how we can support the community and how we can use some of these fundings that's allocated through the federal government to support that. So total so far awarded to Henry County is about thirteen million dollars. With eight million dollars coming recently, eight point four. From the Social Security Act Administration as part of the CARES. That will also have to be approved by the board as a recipient. They're approved receiving the funds and that'll be at our next meeting. Once we get all the information that this just recently happened, just want to make the board aware of it. And make sure, you know, if you have any questions, we can get them answered for you. Chair, I think that's it unless the board has any questions for our office.
For the record, we also state that these funds have to be, I guess, allocated by a certain data. And there are some timelines and guidance that we have to do to definitely take advantage of these CARES Act funds.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct there. Each one of them has a different. And we have a, that's your organizational chart that has the status of each one, the expiration date and when it can be used. And we're going through now and making sure we cover all restrictions. One thing you can't do is make sure you don't duplicate your services, duplicate your funding request. And making sure that each one is separated and there's specific things. As you'll see later, one of the grant funds is inland, our consent agenda is a small amount of money for police and their decontamination and the COVID response protective equipment. So definitely teams done amazing job separating everything out, making sure we're doing it. But the large amount that just come in is basically, I think, for community improvements and helping the community out. So we'll definitely be in touch and bring more detail to the board.
Okay, all right, well, we're looking forward to that. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, seeing none, we'll now move into the consent agenda. And again, as I go over these board, please let me know after I finish if there's any that you would like to remove from the consent agenda to further discussion. The first one is coming from the building and planning review. And it's a resolution approving a request for the creation of a new street, district-like district for Greystone Manor Phase One subdivision in District Two. And senior services, there's a resolution authorizing a sub grant contract with the Atlanta Region Commission. Utilizing Families First Coronavirus Response Act federal funding in the amount of ninety-one thousand fourteen dollars. Under the fire department, there's a resolution to accept a grant from the Georgia trauma in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. To purchase trauma equipment and supplies for Henry County Fire Department. In the police department, there's a resolution accepting a grant in the amount of ninety-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars. From the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the COVID Officer Safety Initiative or the COVID nineteen. And then under, also under the police department, there are several others. One, a resolution approving the purchase of a forensic tool from Gray Shift in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. Plus the ongoing annual cost for criminal investigations. Another one authorizing signature of the county manager a designate for the red speed to be named. And the authorized agent to carry out administrative notifications as authorized under O C G A. Contained in the resolution that has been previously approved as nineteen-one thirty-one. And then, of course, under the police department, there's a resolution to retire two male Belgian Malinos from service with the Henry County Police Department. And then under community development, there is a resolution accepting the automatic renewals of cooperation agreements with the cities of Hampton, Locust Grove, McDonough and Stockbridge. To re-qualify as an urban county for participation in the C D B G program for F Y years twenty-one through twenty-three. Under financial services, there is an ordinance amendment that is requested for section two dash two thirty-three, section four, five and section six. And it's again, under county purchases, bids and et cetera. Under, also under financial services is a resolution authorizing the use of the North Georgia Fuel Cooperative to purchase fuel as a unit slash price contract. Under technology services, there is a resolution approving the renewal of the network hardware infrastructure annual smart net maintenance contract. And also a resolution approving the renewal of a network software infrastructure annual smart net maintenance contract. And then the final agenda item that is presented under the consent agenda is under the Department of Transportation. Is a resolution awarding bid number twenty dash forty-five for cement stabilized base reclamation construction, milling, patching and resurfacing. So those are items under the consent agenda. Is there any that the board requests to have removed to further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Thomas. You're, okay.
Not for removal, but for further discussion. I do have a problem when you have contracts that just go automatically renewed. Don't understand why we don't get information on what the renewals are, are they upgrades, are they increasing costs? Or what it is? So I'm looking on the technology. When you have two contracts that are being automatically renewed, I would like to get more information about them. It's not so much I want them removed, but I definitely like to have more information about them. How long have they've had this contract? Have there been increases over the years? What are they doing? Who are they? Should it go up for bid now? I like to have that information. Because we have to get away from constantly automatically renewing contracts without information. We have found ourselves in position paying for things we're not supposed to pay for. But because we automatically renew them, they just take the money and keep going.
Well, okay, well, what I'm going to recommend, Commissioner Thomas, is that we take those off the consent agenda and allow you to have discussion. But let me see, or is someone here to, from technology services to answer those questions? That Commissioner Thomas has. And if we feel that after you give that brief update, if there needs to be even further discussion, we're going to have to remove it from the consent agenda. So can someone give from technology services some information about those two items on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'll defer to Jamie. Now he'll, he'll take care of that. If you can refer to your packet that was provided, it is in there and Jamie will go over it for you.
Oh, it's all for Cisco. Otherwise, there's going to be a. Sorry, it's all for system hardware and software. Cisco is the company we use for the backbone. We recently upgraded to ByteWorks for our Cisco equipment and software. And that's who the renewal is through. The hardware would be everything that's network on the system and then the software is what controls that network. For the software, some of the things we are doing is upgrading to something called Cisco Umbrella. Which basically puts a cover over the network for security. I'm not sure if you have any specific questions, but that's what it's all for.
Jamie, I think you told us in red folder, this was a decrease in contract cost, right?
I'm sorry, say that again, sir.
Red folder, I think you mentioned was a decrease in contract price.
Yes, it will be. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So I look to Commissioner Thomas, based on that information, do you want to leave it on the consent agenda? Or do you want to take it off and vote for it separately?
No, I think it can stay on the consent agenda. But I do want us as a board to not get comfortable in automatically renewing contracts without information. Presented publicly to people out there. Because there are some people saying, you know, if you're constantly automatically renew contracts, they're not opportunities for new vendors to bid. And I do understand there are certain things that do need to be automatically. I mean, there are certain companies need to stay in place regardless because of the nature of services they bring to the county. But I don't want us to get comfortable in that automatic renewed, automatic renewed. We need to open the doors for competition, open the doors for the small businesses whenever it's possible.
Okay, okay, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. So what staff I'll direct you to do is again, for future meetings, especially for these automatic renewals where appropriate. Bring them before the board versus consent is what I'm hearing. Okay, okay, all right, okay. So we've had the questions and addressed, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none here and now the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, I see a motion from Commissioner Thomas and a second from Commissioner Clements. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, county clerk, that looks to be five. Vote on that unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move into the next agenda item, which is S P L O S. And it's a resolution approving the allocation of S P L O S for revenue. So let's see, I guess. In that presentation, we asked you now come forward, Mr. Rocky Romero.
Morning, Chair and Board members.
Good morning.
I'm going to share my screen. There we go. Can you see my screen, Chair?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a resolution, as you mentioned, to approve the allocation for the S P L O S for revenue above predicted collections. S P L O S for revenue above predicted collection is estimated at nineteen million eight hundred thousand dollars. Staff recommends splitting the nineteen million eight hundred thousand dollars equally by countywide and per district. Each district at three point three million dollars. The allocation for the countywide projects will be brought before the board at a later date. Just going down the districts. District one, Pixville Road, New Hope to Bridge, one million seven hundred fifty thousand. That project was already bid out and we'll be bringing this to the board at the next available meeting. Resurfacing, widening and surface treatment, one million five hundred fifty thousand dollars. For District Two, Mill at Mount Carmel at one million dollars. Selfridge Road, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then resurfacing, widening and surface treatment, one million five hundred fifty thousand dollars. For District Three, we're looking at Heritage Park Improvement, have a million dollars. And then resurfacing, widening and surface treatment, two million eight hundred thousand dollars. For District Four, mostly park, one million three hundred fifty thousand dollars. I Drive, which is a dirt road, six hundred thousand dollars. And they're finding one million three hundred fifty thousand for the resurfacing, widening and surface treatment. And then for District Five, we have West Panola, three point three million dollars. This is a project that was bid out, bid opening was last week and we'll be bringing it to the board for the next available board meeting. So staff recommends approval of the allocation revenue above predicted collection as shown, as mentioned before. We'll take any, any questions at this time.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas, if we can, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
I have no questions directly, Rocky, but on the District Four, you and I do need to have a additional discussion before finalizing all the dollars that you presented today.
Correct.
Okay, other questions or comments, Commissioner Clements? Okay, please unmute, please.
Can you go back to the District Two, Rocky?
Yes. Okay. Can you see it?
I see it, but we discussed having a conversation with the development authority about that Selfridge Road. Do you remember?
No, ma'am.
It was somebody we talked to about, had the conversation with the development authority about that Selfridge Road. That was a development project, so we need to discuss it. We don't have to discuss it now, but we need to discuss that.
Okay, and this is just, this is not the entire road, Commissioner, it's just, just a portion of it.
Okay, yeah, we need to have a conversation about it because I know there was a project that was coming up. On expansion of one of the businesses over there that needed something done over there.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I have a quick, okay, I can't have a belly seat. Okay, thank you. And so I didn't print out the resolution, but can you remind me what the resolution is approving? Is it approving that just the allocation dollars and not necessarily the projects? I know we're going to stick to work on the countywide ones, but it seems like there's an equal distribution with county and then each district. So is it the dollars and/or the projects or just the dollars for the districts that you went through today?
So we're just approving the dollars for the, for the projects. I still have, and the projects are already on the S P L O S for list. So all those projects are already designated and approved by the board and also by the citizens who voted for S P L O S for. So basically, this is just the allocation of the funding. I will have to come back to the board, like, like I mentioned, West Village was bid out. I have to come back for the board to prove that construction contract as well as Pixville. But this is just basically the allocation so we can move forward on bidding some of these projects.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none here and now the floor is now open for a motion. See, Commissioner Holmes, make the motion.
Chair Wood, I would like to second with the amendment that this is only the allocation and not the projects.
Okay, okay. So the motion, you're okay with that motion, Commissioner Holmes? You made the, okay, okay. So again, the motion is that it is just the allocation and not the projects. That was been motioned second. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, that looks to be five, so a unanimous vote on that, so thank you. Okay, we will now move into the next item, which is regarding the capital financing. And we are going to look to the county, deputy county manager to identify who's going to present that.
That'll be Mr. Jogsetter, our legal starter.
Thank you for the reminder. Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. Thank you. Well, in, yesterday you saved a proposed resolution that is the next step. In moving towards your first phase capital financing. And I know there's some questions, I'm going to try to anticipate some of these questions. What that resolution does is authorizes your financial services director. To receive bids and make a recommendation to the board to accept the highest responsible bid. Sale and subsequent leaseback to the county of the. sale and subsequent leaseback to the county of the judicial building, which is the building on the square where the courthouse, where the state court building, state court sits. So that sounds like we're selling the building, but really not. The county is limited in the ways it can borrow money. And one of the ways the state authorizes us to borrow money is to engage in these lease purchase financing programs. So the way this would work is we would sell the building to the, essentially to an intermediary for the total amount of the debt that we want to incur. We would then lease the building back from that intermediary and the lease payments would be equal to our debt service. So we're basically borrowing money using the state court building as collateral, but we're doing it in a way that the law permits us to do. And traditionally, how it's done is there is a bank or a, we're doing these through what are called certificates of participation, so that the lender actually loans us money. The intermediary doesn't really play a part, they, they're simply the intermediary that acquires title of the property and then immediately leases it and conveys it back to us. So we have identified the state court building or the judicial center for a couple of reasons. One is we, the building's value to be to or greater than, or I'm sorry, is equal to or less than the amount of money that we're borrowing. And we wanted to avoid having five or six or seven different parcels assembled that may be scattered all over the, all over the county. So there are very few requirements for what the property we use as collateral would be. But one of those requirements is it has to be a, an essential function of the government. The lenders don't want to see us use something like parkland or a recreation center or something like that, that you may grow tired of and you may decide, we just don't want this facility anymore. They want to make sure it's a facility that we are essentially stuck with. So you have to operate that state court building, you have to operate the state court. So that we chose that state court building for that purpose. And also, we have that building valued at the right amount. We have that building valued at roughly seventeen million dollars. And Mr. Johnson will have to confirm, I believe that's roughly the amount that our initial financing is going to be for. This first, first phase of financing is going to be roughly that amount. There's a weird rule that doesn't, that doesn't allow us to pledge more value as collateral than our loan. So it just came up at a bit of a last minute, because I think the finance team had some difficulty identifying what property to use as collateral. The original plan was going to be the historic courthouse, but that plan could not go through because, for two reasons. One, we had difficulty finding a legal description for that entire facility. And secondly, that structure is valued too much. We would not have been able to use that building as collateral. As we went through the building inventory of the county, we had trouble identifying any other properties that would have satisfied both of those requirements, both the essential function and the value. So on the state court building, we are running notices, because we are required to put notices fifteen days in advance, at least fifteen days in advance. We were lucky to be able to settle upon the state court building, cobble together a legal description and get that legal description notice in the paper on Saturday, which was the Fourth of July, in order to allow you to approve this financing on July twenty first, which was the target date for the first phase of your borrow. So that's where we are, and that's what this resolution does, is authorizes the financial services director to bids and to make a recommendation to this board to award the lowest bidder, or I'm sorry, the highest bidder. And that will, that bid will be essentially used for your finance.
Okay, well, we've heard the presentation, okay, um, thank you, Mr. Jock Stetter. As we opened it up to the Board of Commissioners, can, can we elaborate a little bit more about what the values of the administration building? Um, and could it have been a portion of this, this debt that we're talking about versus all of it being done by the court and the judicial center?
Let me pull up the, the spreadsheet I got from finance. The building's value approximately ten million dollars, that would not have been enough, we would have needed to add some additional properties to it. As you may think about to try to keep it location, you know, try to keep it centralized, might be the jail, but the jail is being used for another financing project, so we couldn't pull the jail out. And probably the combination of the jail and the admin building would be too much. So if we wanted to include admin building, we would have had to reach out and find other facilities. We could have added, we could have had the admin building combined with, you know, your animal control building or your DOT building or maybe your public safety SPOSS building, we could have done that. But we were concerned that at that point, the record keeping would have been difficult and you would have had to be looking around to figure out what properties were, were used for this particular financing. The other issue is the, the has been in the past used for other financing. And we're going to have to, and you'll see this in the next couple of months, you will see a resolution to put that goal to the courthouse back into the county. It's currently, not the courthouse, I'm sorry, the administration building. The administration building is currently tied in a corporation that is the county's corporation that was used for a previous funding. And so we, we're gonna clean that up over the next week or so, or the next meeting or so. But the admin building by itself wouldn't have been enough and we would have had to go searching for other parcels to use with it. And I'm not sure we have a, um, any source for me to create a legal description of just the courthouse bill, I'm sorry, just the admin building without including the jail and all the other property. We may have been able to cobble that together, I don't know for sure. So if it's the board's desire to use another piece of property, I've been looking at the calendar. I'm not sure we would be able to achieve or get to the board on the twenty first, so if you want and in the twenty first to the last, either the first day or a call meeting, but we
Yeah, you're, you're breaking up, and I think you're saying that if there's any other properties other than what has been proposed, that you could probably go back and do it, but twenty, the, the twenty first would be that date. My position is, I, I don't want to slow anything down, of course, but I just wanted to get an understanding. So I think that addressed my question. Are, are there any other questions from the board, Commissioner Barr and then Commissioner Thomas?
Oh, yes, thank you, Chair. Patrick, I know you and I had a discussion about this the other day. I'd got the phone call that we were selling the courthouse and it was kind of upsetting to some people. And I hope in the future that, that we'll share that information with the Board of Commissioners before we advertise something in the paper. But I wanted to ask you, do we, you, you've said we've done this type of financing before in the past, is that correct?
Hundred percent certain, and I haven't gone back and looked in the county records, but I believe that it was done on the original acquisition of the public safety building. I believe it also may have been done very early on at the jail. And it's possible it was done on the admin building when it was initially constructed as well. But I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain about which projects it was done on. But it has been done in the past, and it's a fairly, it's a fairly common method of government finance.
And it's basically putting up collateral, that's all we're doing.
Also, Commissioner
I think that's a, that's a good way to describe it, yes.
One of the things too, it does not inhabit us too, is our future plans about adding on to the judicial center over there for future expansion. This does not inhabit that at all. So moving forward, this would be part of a plan that would not do anything other than, you know, make sure we do want to add on to that, that judicial center.
Okay, are there any other questions or comment, oh, Commissioner Thomas, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas?
My question is, you need this money now for what exactly? And is this a part of our capital improvement plan to borrow this money now? And if you need this money now, where is it going to sit, what is it going to be doing? So that we can understand why you need this money now, why are we going through this?
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, um, a, a few months ago, the board approved a capital project list on year one. This is the funding that that list, that the board approved, will start the process that we can start, make sure these projects are done. Uh, it goes back to parking, about five million dollars in park improvements. There's about five million dollars in the facility improvements for the roofs and everything that we've been working on for, for three years now. So that list that, that the board approved a few months ago, and it, two minutes ago, the board approved us moving forward for the July twenty first date was the direction, the direction the board gave us to bring back on that day the approval. So this is that process for that. So the list that provided for capital is the, um, the intended use for this funding to move forward with our vacation projects. Not beautification, but the park improvements, uh, there's transportation, there's some, um, this facility improvements that we've been working on.
Okay, well then, I, I'm sorry, ma'am, Chair, no, go ahead. Then I need to get more information, Brad. Because I do understand, I still have the list of projects that was under the capital improvement plan, which was extensive. And I remember asking the same question at least two times in two different meetings. Each one of these projects must come back before us for individual approval, is that correct?
That's correct, this will be
Then if that's the case, then why are we approving seventeen million dollars, I think that you want now to say this is part of our capital improvement plan, what should come before us? What project are we approving first? How much does that project cost? Where do we plan to get that particular money from? But I do not want to approve money based upon a forty page document to say, here are all our projects that you all approved, not so. There was a plan and the plan stated each project will come back before this board separately to determine which one of these projects we will approve. We did not give you an open book to say that everything on all those projects were approved. And I have repeated this, I know, three, four times, and I've asked that question three or four times. And the answer has always been, yes, every project comes back before the board. So now, please don't tell me we approved the whole book of projects and now we'll just give you money as you want to, as you say you need it to go forth. That's not what I understood.
That's not a process either, so
Okay.
Process is, we approved a funding mechanism. You can't go out and get bids or we're not allowed to approve projects. So the process from here, if this is approved on the twenty first, if the funding mechanism is put in place, that we have a funding. At that point, for example, your, your buildings at, uh, at your parks that we discussed several times, that funding will become available. We'll go get bids, we'll come back to the board for approval for each project as we move forward from that list. It does not, Commissioner, say you have a blank check, that's not the intention of this. The intention of this now is we have a funding mechanism. We went out and there's definitely been bid processes done before, but the funding never came to fruition. At this point, at the twenty first, the bond is sold, the board approves the funding. We've got a designated list that we've approved by the board has, that can change, it's a fluid list. But now they got funding that we can go out and move to the next level and you guys can, can then approve the budget, the projects that has funding mechanism attached to it. Does that make sense?
Oh, it makes sense, I just want to make sure, when we put money into this capital improvement project, I don't want to look up and you're working on the east side, working on the west side, working on north and south. I'm going, what are you doing, then you go back and say, oh, it's a part of that package, no. I want to make sure if we put money up and place this money where it's supposed to be, each project come back before this board, before you start work on it. I do not want it to be assumed that every project in that package is approved, that's what I'm after.
So, um, so, so, uh, Mr. Johnson, do you by chance have the list? And again, it was a starting list that was supposed to at least give us a benchmark. And I do know that all of those projects will have to come back individually. And this is only the financing aspect of it that started out with that list. Do you by chance just have that available just as
I have mine, I kept it, so I know
I do not have it in front of me, Chair, Dr. Shapiro.
This, um, this is not a blank check, um, this is clearly, and, uh, uh, we're approving the financing tool. And before any decisions are made regarding projects, it has to come back before this board. Um, so that's where we are. Again, the, the resolution before is, is really just to talk about, um, the financing aspect of it. And, you know, that's why we're having conversations about, you know, what's the collateral, how it's gonna be done. And again, it has to come back before the board.
Okay.
Each project does. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, here and now, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion. I see Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Clemens as a second, any further discussion or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please raise by signal, raising your hand. Okay, that looks to be five, zero, County Clerk, can you confirm that vote for me? I just want to make sure that one's correct.
About that, yes, ma'am, the, um, resolution authorizing staff to continue moving towards a lease purchase finance arrangement utilizing the judicial center, state court bidding, building as collateral. The vote was Commissioner Holmes made a motion to approve, Commissioner Clemens seconded, and the vote was unanimous.
All right, thank you, ma'am, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we'll now move into the next, um, agenda item. And I'm trying to ask, um, Commissioner Clemens if she will again, um, present this one. It was regarding a resolution requesting the county attorney, um, to bring back a resolution regarding the statue there on the square. So, um, just want to make sure we've got a good clarification of what the, what you're asking the attorney to do, so.
Yes, we've been getting several emails, um, in reference to the statue on the square, which is on the square in McDonough, but it's on county owned property. It's been a very confusing process, and I think our county attorney and our county manager has been working, um, on this project and trying to work with McDonough to make sure that, um, that we did everything legally and that we made sure that we respected the territory of, uh, the city of McDonough. So at this point, the only thing that, um, that we're asking in the resolution is that we would direct the county manager and the county attorney to establish a plan to remove the statue off of county owned property and to coordinate with the city of McDonough and identify an alternative location within the city, if that's the city's choice. Um, and to identify the manner and the method of removal and the funding mechanism for it.
Okay.
That's basically the, um, the, the request, that's the resolution, so we just, um.
Okay, uh, very good, I'd like to open that up for a discussion. We've heard, um, the clarification of what the resolution, um, is, is asking of. And it basically, you know, when I look at it, is to ask the county attorney and the city manager to bring back a strategy regarding the removal of the statue.
No, Chair, that's not what it is, it's, it is authorizing them to move forward. It's not asking them to bring anything back to us again, it, it's asking them to move forward.
Okay, and that's, I'm glad, that's why we're having this conversation. So, uh, let's, um, have conversation, because I do want to talk about this, um, as well. But I have some questions of clarification before I kind of give my opinions about the resolution, um, as it's just now been clarified. So, um, Mr. Jock Stetter, can you clarify? Because I just want everybody to be educated about, uh, what are the current laws that are related to this? And then more importantly, um, we've heard, um, that again, that the county owns it, that the, the city actually has been managing it, and, um, just wanted to hear some, some conversation about that as well.
And correction, Chairwood, the county does not own the statue, the county owns the land.
I, I said the front, okay, so let me clarify the land, okay. So, Mr. Jock Stetter, if you could, could help us with that, so.
Yeah, well, 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 let me tell you what we know and what we don't know for certain as we sit here today. We know that we, that the county owns the land inside the square. So the, the park that is in the middle of the square So the, the park that is in the middle of the square in downtown McDonough. We know that the county owns that real estate. We also know that in nineteen eighty-four, I believe it was. The county entered into a lease with the city of McDonough. Whereby the city is given the, that they're basically the tenant. They manage the property, they operate it, they maintain it, they repair it, they improve it. We know that's in place and that has been in place since the eighties. It is a renewable lease that is, that automatically renews unless it is terminated. And I've seen no evidence that that lease has ever been terminated. We also know that in nineteen ten, thereabouts. That the then local chapter of the daughters of the Confederacy donated the statute. The statue on the square to someone. We don't know to whom it was donated. We don't know if it was donated to the city of McDonough. We don't know if it was donated to Henry County. We don't know whether or not that donation was ever accepted. We also don't know if there was any arrangement between either the county or the city and the daughters of the Confederacy. To allow the statue to remain. Under the control of the daughters of Confederacy or anything like that. We don't know any of those, any of those questions. Part of the reason we don't know those questions is because there just aren't any records back that far. I believe the county's records only go back to nineteen thirteen that we've been able to locate. The city's records, I understand, go back to sometime after nineteen thirteen. But nobody's been able to locate any county or city official records as far back as nineteen ten. So there is some doubt in my mind about who owns the actual structure. On the square. And that's, that's something we would have to determine either. You know, we would have to either find appropriate records and come to a conclusion. Or we could seek, uh, judicial declaration to help us determine the ownership of it, of the statue. As far as what the law says, the, there is a Georgia statute. That deals with Confederate monuments or all monuments, whether they're Confederate or otherwise. They would apply to the Confederate monument on the square if it is publicly owned. That statute prohibits any local government or anyone else from relocating, removing, concealing. Obscuring or altering any publicly owned monument. Um, that would include this, this monument on the square. However, you are permitted to take appropriate measures to preserve, protect and interpret the monument. So wh- what we are going to do, if this resolution is approved, is we will dig in to determine two things. We will have to dig in to determine how can we assure ourselves. Whether or not that monument is publicly owned. And by that, I mean owned either by the county or by the city of McDonough. And secondly, determine what plan is come up with. To relocate the, the monument and determine whether that plan would qualify. As a measure to preserve, protect and interpret. So if we're able to establish one of those two things, then I think we could satisfy the requirements of this law. So that's, that's sort of where we are today.
I'll, I'll, I'll finish my comments and then I'll come to you, Commissioner Holmes. Thank you. Um, so, uh, thank you for the clarification on that. And, and I just want to, um, just make a statement about it, um, um, as, uh, because I do know. Um, as a black person, that there's a huge outcry about all of these horrible times in, in our history. Um, and the pain that we're going through even today. I, I, I understand it. It is real. Um, and I truly believe that, um, you know. We as a society, when I became elected and all of us became elected, we were elected by the people. Cause I actually would say that if anything, we need to deal with the pain and the crisis of what's going on in our. That helps stem from the doggone issues of slavery. But I also say that we've got to tell the whole story, um, of what that Confederate monument or whatever represents. But I also say we need to tell the freedom side of it as well. I mean, even on that square, we're talking about a monument. Uh, but where there's also a Confederate fountain down there. Um, so we need more monuments, in my opinion, and we need more that tells the whole story. But I would say, I know that that's not going to address the issue that's in the hearts and the minds of people right now. I understand that. And I also say that Henry County needs to do a better job of highlighting some of the African Americans and other Native Americans around here. When I think about, um, Willoughby Hatch or who was first, you know, first African American killed in, um, World War, uh, two. I, I think about T C Carter, who was an African American man that actually helped to save some people's lives from that train wreck. And Mr. W D, uh, uh, Mr. J W Lemmons, who actually started the N double A C P. And Mr. W D Lemmons, who was a deacon right over there, leading to where the Western parallel is going to be leading to. And Mr. Jim Neely over in the Hampton area, who basically, um, was one registered and the, um, lynching, um, database. But again, I do understand that talking about what I'm talking about is not going to address all of the deep pains that's out there. Um, but I just think that as we go through this process of trying to analyze what it is that is going on, who owns it and all the real estate. I don't think that really matters to people. That, that doesn't matter. Who owns it is there. And so what I think that we should probably do, I, and I, and here's a question I have for, for Patrick as well. Um, I've spoken to some black people about that statue, uh, outside of us as commissioners, and there was mixed, mixed responses to it. And that, at the end of the day, I went over and tried to find out more information about the petition that's out there. And a lot of those people that signed that petition are not even from Henry County. So as we're talking about next steps, um, I'm going to direct this to the county attorney again. Um, is it possible to even get this on the November ballot to hear from the people? My question is, do we have enough time to get this on the ballot for November to hear from the people? So Patrick, Mr. Jock Stetter.
So as far as advertising a referendum, we, we probably do have sufficient time. To advertise a referendum to appear on the November va, November ballot as part of the general election. One of the questions that we will have to answer, and I, and I don't know the answer to this question as, as I sit here. Is whether or not the county has the authority, period, to submit a question like this to the voters. I, I can tell you there is some authority. And I haven't had a chance this morning to, to dig into it and located it. But there is some authority to suggest that county governments can only put on a referendum. Questions that are specifically authorized to be on a referendum. Especially if that referendum is non-binding. So, um, I will have to look into that. And i- if the answer to that question is that we do have that authority. Then I do believe you would have time to put that question. For a vote at the November ballot. It would be, it will be tight. But I, I do believe we have sufficient time.
Okay, and, and so, uh, I still have the floor. I want to kind of continue my thoughts about this. Cause I've been really, really thinking about all of this. Um, and, and like I said, I, I'm an African American, yes. Um, Confederate monuments, Confederate flags still kind of causes something. But at the end of the day, what is going to help us to deal with some of the issues that we're dealing with is, is really a big question. And moving a monument is still a question for me. And then the question is if it's moved, and I think, um, Commissioner Clemens, um, resolution, which is if it is moved. Where is it best to go? And the question I have is where is it going to be acceptable anyways? So are we really talking about removing it or doing something different that is going to satisfy? The pain that everybody is going through, especially in today's times right now. So, um, I saw Commissioner Holmes with his thoughts, and then I saw Commissioner Thomas, um, with her hand raised as well. So Commissioner Holmes will go to you, and then we'll, after Commissioner Thomas, we'll come to Commissioner Barnes.
I just have, um, I have one question for Patrick, and I do believe the, um, the Confederate statue does need to be removed. Um, Patrick, um, um, told us that, um, the statue was donated in two thousand, when, um, the early nineteen hundreds. But you also said there are no records of the statue being donated. And I'm trying to figure out, how do you know it was donated when there are no records?
Well.
How do you know that, that the, the daughters of the Confederate didn't just go and erect the statue in the middle of county property without anybody's permission?
Right, and, and I don't know that for certain. Um, when I said that, that I know that a donation happened. I got that from some alternative historical sources. I think. Um, there is a, there is an old publication. It's a Henry County history. A history of Henry County. I don't remember exactly what it's called. I can, I can certainly share that with you. And there's a chapter, uh, not a full chapter, there's a handful of pages that deal with that monument. And outlines the process that was taken. There was a big public event, a lot of people attended. And it repeatedly said that, you know, they donated, they donated it. But you, your point is precisely the point I was making. I don't know if the county or the city ever accepted that donation. It doesn't appear that it was, you know, done in the, in the, you know, under the cover of secrecy. It doesn't appear that it was put on as a, as a trespass, but it does, also doesn't appear. With anything I can see, that there was any formal act of acceptance. And I think we could make a, a fair argument that absent formal acceptance, that personal property still belongs to someone else.
Correct. And I mean, in the early nineteen hundreds, they, they didn't have to do anything in secrecy. And, um, you know, going on a, a website or, or a Facebook page to, to access that information. I mean, that's all hearsay if there's no public documentation. So I don't believe, based on that information, I don't believe that this needs to go to the voters. Um, this just needs to be a vote between the board of commissioners to have the monument removed. Because the monument does not belong to either the city of McDonough or the, or the Henry, or Henry County.
Okay, um, to see Commissioner, I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Thomas.
Make sure I'm unmuted here. Uh, first of all, I do want to thank, um, Commissioner Clemens for bringing this to our attention. I had no idea that the county owned that property. Nor did I, nor would I have had any reason to question who owns it because it sits in the city of McDonough. So thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. And second of all, we are leaders and we were elected to lead this county. And in doing so, it's our responsibility to make decisions for all of the Henry County residents that are here. Not just one group or all of them. That's a public space, a public space that's supported by taxes from everyone. Not just one group of people, but all the people in Henry County. Whether it's one penny, two pennies, or property taxes or sale taxes. Is supported by a public space. It's a public space supported by public dollars. And whoever goes there should feel welcome there in every form of fashion. They should not feel intimidated. They should not feel less than. They should not be reminded of a time that was harsh and cruel. But they should feel like this is a place for me to come and for me to feel welcome. I participate in the well-being of it and the care of it. And having that statue there does not do that at all. It is intimidating to some people. It is questionable to other people. And I have received so many emails saying we want this statue removed. And I also am aware of the fact of the times that we're living in and that this is happening all across the country. It does not solve a problem, ma'am chair, I will agree with that. It does not solve a problem. But it does help people feel like they're trying to correct a wrong that was done to a people. And that people are black people. We are not surrounded by other symbols of other cultures who have suffered. The Holocaust was horrible, but you don't see Hitler everywhere. Nor do you see reminders of Germany and what they did to them. It's not there. It's placed in an area where you can choose to go and visit if you want to learn more about it. And that's what needs to happen in this case. It needs to be placed in an area where you can choose if you want to go visit and learn more about Patrick Henry, you can do that. But it should not be placed directly in my passing, in my face, that reminds me of what took place. I did some research on Patrick Henry, trying to figure out what type of person is he? And then, you know, it really said about some of the people that he were, his words and his lifestyle conflicted. He would say that I'm not supporting slavery, but yet he owns six and seven plus or more slaves. He would say that it was a horrible thing to do, but he could not bring himself to release his own slaves. Well, the Bible said a double minded man is unstable in all his ways. And therefore we definitely don't want to support a double minded man who's unstable in all his ways. Uh, monuments are designed to commemorate things, hopefully that are great, great movements that took place, great people who made a difference in the world. We want to remind our children, this is what you need to try and be like. This is someone you can emulate based upon the decisions they made, the lifestyle they made, the impact they made in the community. We can't say that about the person that's there. Um, and of course, being of, from slavery to myself, my grandfather was a slave. And my mom would tell me about, he would show him, show her the whips on his back and talk about what he endured. So I'm simply saying that this is not the place for it. This is not the place for it, and this is the time to remove it. It's also a wonderful opportunity to think about what else can be put there. Our first responders need somebody to celebrate them. They're taking a beating now in some of the things that are going forth in, around the world. This may be an opportunity to say, hey, we want to celebrate first responders of all nationalities and put them there. It's a great opportunity. So I do support the fact that the statue needs to be removed. And we need to come forth and do it. We don't need this on a vote. We didn't put forth a vote for several other things we've done around this county. We didn't bring it back to the public and say, what do you think about it? We took on the leadership and decided to make it happen. We took on the leadership and decided to vote and to lead. And I think that's what we need to do in this particular case as well. So thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Barn.
Okay, you hear me?
Yes.
I, uh, you know. I don't know where to start, but I just, um, I really believe that. But right now, I don't support taking the statue down. But I do support having a conversation. The conversation we have now is all one sided. There's a lot of different views on the statue. And we need to let everybody be heard. And if it's public hearings or, or, or what we need to do, more Zoom meetings, I open for discussion. Now for slavery, I think slavery was probably the worst thing that ever happened in this country. And I'm ashamed of it. But to me, that statue don't represent just about slavery. It represents a lot of things. People that fought in the Confederacy. A lot of them didn't even have a, they couldn't even decide whether they wanted to go or not. They were just drafted. So you're going. Whether they believed in this or that. And a lot of lost their lives. As far as Patrick Henry, there's not Patrick Henry on that statue anywhere. Patrick Henry's over there from the courthouse. Um, this was Colonel Zachary. And my understanding, I've done some research, but my understanding, he wasn't affiliated with any kind of white supremacy group. And I just believe we need to have a lot of conversation about this before we move forward. Um, if we're going to come together in Henry County, we got to be able to talk. I got to be able to talk to you about it and any of the other board of commissioners, and y'all got to be comfortable talking to me about it. But for us just to make a decision today is just go separate this county vote. And I really believe we need to have more discussion, and I'm open for discussion. But, uh, that's all I'm gonna comment right now. And I, no, I got one other thing. And, uh, I thought was very interesting. I've done a little research on it. And I wanted to mention this. You know, I was reading an article for Condemn's Arise. And she said removing monuments is sanitizing history. And I, I thought that was so appropriate. But anyway, uh, that's all I'm gonna say about it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And, and I want to go back to, um, Commissioner Thomas, and then I'll come back to you, uh, as you get your hand raised to Commissioner Thomas. The reason I'm suggesting that we, um, take it to the citizens, and it's because this is a very pivotal time in our society than ever before. Um, unfortunately, we've had some recent issues, um, that is really, in my opinion, as bad as those things have been with George Floyd and. Breonna Taylor and, and of course. with George Floyd and Breonna Taylor and, and of course Aubrey. I mean, I could just list all the ones that my heart goes out to them and their family. But it has generated some conversations that have not happened before. And I will tell you that the issues that we are dealing with will need to continue to have discussion because there are some deep-rooted pains that many of us are dealing with. Many of us are dealing with. And it's not even just with the, the, the issue with the slavery that we've gone through. We're dealing with issues today. And I even think about it, my heart goes out to what's going on in Atlanta right now. The loss of life of children. And, and, and to me, there, there are some serious issues, not just with racism, but hatred. And even within races is, is that same kind of thing. And so the, the, the conversation that we need to have is how, what is, well, the county needs to partner with the city of McDonough, if anything, and have these conversations about that statue and deal with the facts and so forth. And I do agree still that the citizens need to be able to, um, have some input into all of these discussions that we're having. I'm a Black person and yes, I am and still do deal with racism. But we've got to figure out what is the real thing and the statue, I agree, is a move in the right direction. And that statue that you're talking about, um, that is in the square, it is a memorial to, and I've done some homework too. Um, it is a memorial to those that died on the Confederate side. And you're, and Commissioner Barn is right. Some of those people died and didn't want to be part of that. And then on the other side, we've got, um, you know, those that fought for our freedom that needs to be celebrated. So that's why I suggested we've got to look at, you know, not taking down, but if anything, adding to. And again, I know that all of what we're talking about is not going to address the real issues that we're dealing with right now. But I think that we need to see, I love the resolution of allowing, um, the county attorney and the county manager to, um, continue to talk with McDonough or talk with whomever, um, to help us come up with some strategies based on what our citizens are really saying. I think we need to continue to hear from what our citizens are saying before we just actually make this final decision based on what, what we've heard from the few people that we've spoken to. Because we've got 240,000 citizens in here now. And I don't know if it's the number that are registered. But again, we just got to make sure that we have more dialogue and input from all of our citizens or a cross-section of our citizens. And even as I've said before, there have been some, even some Black people that I've spoken to that says, okay, yes, I agree that that statue is horrible. It reminds me of what it makes me feel like, but we've got some important issues. And especially in our Black community, we've got some things that we need to work together on, even within our own race too. So the conversation has been made, the resolution has been presented. Are there any, oh, Commissioner Thomas had some additional comments. Commissioner Thomas, didn't want to, uh, about, didn't want to ignore you.
I do want to thank Commissioner Barn for that correction. I did say Patrick Henry, I'm sorry. That's come from, I was reading so many different articles of Commissioner Barn. I put them all in one lump sum and that shouldn't happen. So thank you so much for correcting me on that name. I apologize for that. Um, but I do want to say that as we move forward, we do need to take and take, take on what we're here for. We're leaders. And I don't see passing this on. I see that we as leaders need to make a decision. We have made so many decisions about other things. And I do know that there are things that we have to do for self-healing, to work with this community. And, and I would say to those who are listening, they know I'm a community person. If it's coming from the food pantry to the people on the streets, 99% of the time, I want to be there and it's without color. It's whoever's in need. But I do know, right now, to help this country heal, we as Black people need some things to say. Do this because it does help me heal. I can't tell you that it's totally right, but I need something to help me heal. And I do know that these different, uh, flags and statues, when I stop and have to constantly be reminded of where, what happened to my people, does hurt. And somewhere along the line, we have to stop the hurt. I have a problem with the statue being someplace other place. It can be another place. And I do support, uh, Commissioner Clemens by saying, let's continue this conversation. Let's find out what else can be done, work with a collaboration or a group. I think we want to be proactive in doing some things. I just don't want us to wait until something else happens and then we react and not be in position to say, we've already addressed this, we know how it needs to be handled, we're ready to move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, I, I just want to reiterate, um, we all know that, um, Confederate monuments, Confederate flags are symbols of intimidation, symbols of hate. That's why you have, that's why you see them across, in front of courthouses across the South. And I, and I heard, um, somebody mentioned that Confederate soldiers died. They did. They lost the war. It was an act of treason to fight against our country. However, hundreds of thousands of slaves died for no reason but for being Black, the color of their skin. So I'm in favor of moving forward with, um, Commissioner Clemens when she makes the motion of removing the, um, the symbol of hate because it does nobody good in this, in this county that we have to go through the square and see that symbol. And even a symbol of Patrick Henry. Patrick Henry never visited Georgia, if you do your research. I'm not sure why that statue was erected in the square. Patrick Henry owned hundreds of slaves himself. So why do we need those type of symbols in front of the Henry County courthouse? Now, I hear McDonough has a museum and that they're interested in, in housing the statue there. I think that's a good place. And I hear that there, there are, are graveyards for the Confederates where the monument can go. I'm not saying, hey, let's destroy the monument, but the monument needs to be relocated somewhere else. It shouldn't be in the People's Square.
Okay. Commissioner Clement?
So I will go back and thank you, um, Commissioner Thomas, uh, Commissioner Barn, Commissioner, um, Chair Wood, Commissioner Holmes for hearing. You know, we were elected to follow policies. And again, just like when we dealt with the flag, it's all about policies. Um, I didn't just wake up and say, hey, let's remove the Confederate flag. I did my research. The property is owned by the county and we do not own the statue. I'm not saying destroy the statue. I'm calling for a motion today to remove the Confederate statue from county-owned property and donate it to the highest bidder. They can have it free if it's the city of McDonough that wants it. Um, I say we donate it to the sons and daughters of the Confederate, whoever wants it. It's county-owned property, taxpayers' property, and that is not the place for the Confederate statue on county-owned property. So I'm making a motion. I want to be very clear. Don't, I don't want anyone to try to change what the motion is. The motion is to remove the Confederate statue off of Henry County government's property and to donate it to whoever wants it. People, emails can start coming now. You can call the county. I understand that the city of McDonough, and this is just hearsay because the mayor didn't say that he wanted it, but I hear that the city of McDonough may want the statue. And if they have a place, a museum for this statue, that's where it should be. But that statue does not belong on Henry County government's property. It doesn't belong to us. We have a formal way of receiving donations. When we receive a donation, even when our fire department, our police department receives a donation, this board has to vote to accept the donation. There is no record that we accepted this donation. So legally, we do not own the statue. And legally, and I spoke with our county attorney about this, legally, the, the law of the state of Georgia does not apply because we don't legally own this statue. So I want to make it very clear, Henry County does not own this statue. Uh, we do own the property. And the motion is that, and, and guess what? Board, if you guys want to come back and make another motion to accept the donation, then we own it, then it's legally there. But right now, that statue is illegally placed on government property. And I'm asking for a motion to remove the statue from Henry County's government property. That is my motion, Chair, and I'm just waiting on you to allow someone to second it.
Okay, all right. Well, I'd like, thank you, um, Commissioner Clemens for, um, clarifying the motion. Um, and I see, um, Commissioner Holmes, um, seconded. Is that, is that what you did, Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Okay.
Then Commissioner Thomas, you thirded?
Well, uh, before we actually, um, take the vote, this is now, okay, we've had a motion and a second. I want to have a conversation, um, on some thoughts based on this discussion with this. Um, actually, based on this conversation and understanding that we are saying to not to destroy the monument, but to maybe work with the city of McDonough and where the monument should be has really, again, caused me to think through what we're talking about. Uh, because I do agree at the end of the day, um, as I understand where there are concerns, um, for myself, I mean, my own biases. But again, I just feel that we need to have, that process that you spoke about of working, of the county attorney and the county manager working with the city of McDonough will allow, hopefully, um, the citizens to have more input into wherever that statue goes. Because I do not want it destroyed, um, in my opinion. I do want to add more, um, in here in our Henry County, but to highlight even more of our Blacks and African-Americans. I'm not just looking at that. Um, and I do agree that anything that is, um, representing hate needs to be dealt with. So, um, those are my thoughts as I get ready to cast my vote um, regarding the motion that has been made. So Commissioner Holmes?
So, so Commissioner Wood, I want to be clear. This is a vote to remove the statue from the square. It will be removed from the square. After it is removed from the square, then our county attorney will be talking to, they're removing it from the square and they're finding the funding. They do not have to come back for this, well, this is authorizing the removal. And we just said that we're just open to whoever wants to get it. But no, we're not talking about destroying it. And please, I don't want that put out there. This is not about destroying the statue. This is not about erasing history. This is about removing the statue from county-owned property in Henry County. Removing that statue from the square.
Commissioner Clemens?
Okay, um, Commissioner Holmes, um, your, Commissioner Holmes?
I was just gonna ask, um, Commissioner Clemens if she can restate her motion and add a timeline in that motion. Thirty days, sixty days for removal, something to that effect?
Yes. So we have to, uh, what I said was that the county attorney would move him and the county manager, would authorize him to move forward with removing the statue from the square. And yes, we can say, county attorney, how long would it take you guys to remove this statue from the square? We, we don't have to remove it to have a place for it to go. We can remove it and store it somewhere and then, um, find out where it's gonna go from there. But we want to make sure that it's removed properly. So we need to have the right funding so that it's not destroyed. Um, you know, that whoever wants to take it can take it fully intact. So how long will it take, um, county attorney so that we can go ahead and put a date beside it?
What, where this discussion started was?
No, that's right now where it is now, county attorney.
Yeah, I, I don't have any idea how long it'll take. I mean, I, I presume it's gonna require a claim.
We'll say sixty days and, um, um, sixty days. If there's an issue, we'll deal with it then. So we said, within the next sixty days, the statue will be removed and placed, you know, safely. And maybe, I, I think that by tomorrow, somebody will want it. So we may be able to get it done quicker than that. But within sixty days that it will be removed from Henry County's government property, that's the vote, that's the motion. Chair Wood?
Well, um, uh, and, and I, uh, and I, I think that's the second from Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Okay. So more conversation. Um, the removal, how much is this removal is going to be if it is in this resolution and approved by the majority of the board?
Chair Wood, I think that if the community wants to remove, the community will fund it. So I don't think there's an issue, but this is taxpayers' dollars. We need to get it removed. If that's an issue, then we'll come back and deal with it at that time. Um, we want the statue, the vote is, and I don't know why we're trying to confuse this. Can we take the vote, make the motion? If it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. But we need to take the vote. I don't know why we're going back and forth.
Well, um, this is discussion time and this is what the process is as, as a commission. And I have questions and I'm gonna ask those questions. So, um, and I was actually about to vote in favor of, uh, removing the statue from the county-owned property and at least having a plan of where the thing, where it goes.
Yeah, well, we can't come up with a plan, but, excuse me, what? I still have the floor, I still have the floor. We have not, we have not, we don't, we're not deciding where it goes today. We're just saying that we're gonna preserve this statue and we're gonna make sure that it is placed in the proper place. And we're just asking that it be removed from county-owned property. We're gonna preserve the statue.
Well, your motion doesn't really, did, I'm confused because you said at one moment that it's gonna be removed and whoever can buy, but this is really the motion to remove it from the county property. And then now, I think I, and, and, and my, cause that, uh, but my, and now I'm hearing you say that we're gonna preserve it, but the resolution does, I mean, your motion doesn't state that. So I'm confused.
My motion, my motion did say that we will remove it and, and, and keep it intact.
Wait a minute. Commissioner Clemens, please let me finish. So if the motion is to remove the statue and have some, um, preservation plan, I am, I'm in favor of that. If it is to remove the statue and we don't know what's gonna happen, I am not in favor of it. So that's where I am with that. So, um, again. Okay, so can you clarify your motion again?
Uh, was that, I, I, I'm, I'm thinking that you're the only one that thought that I said to destroy it. But I said that we would remove, the motion is to remove the statue within sixty days from Henry County government's property. That in the removal process, that we will make sure that the statue stays intact and be donated to whoever wants it, where it can be honored by whoever wants to honor it, but it should be removed from Henry County's property.
Okay. That's the motion that clarifies for me. All right. Um, that's the second from Commissioner Holmes, okay? All right, given the, okay.
Chair, could I, could I make one comment? Um, I, I don't think we should vote to donate something that we don't own. We, if we don't own it, we don't have the authority to donate. What I'd ask you to do is, um, is perhaps add into your resolution a direction to your county management staff and myself to ensure that, um, we remove it in a lawful manner and that we, um, make appropriate disposition of it. Maybe that would be the, uh, the best way. And we will probably bring those, um, decisions back to the board, at least for discussion or for update. But I think if you add those two provisions into the resolution, I think it makes sense as to exactly what, um, Sherry, Brad and myself have to do most quickly.
Yeah, Patrick, I don't, I don't get the need to bring it back to the board. I mean, you know, we're gonna vote to remove it. We're gonna, we're voting that the, um, that the statue is preserved. And we can direct staff to ensure that, um, that it's put in a decent place until someone claims it. Or, or, um, we can, you know, recommend that it moves to, um, the Confederate cemetery, the same as with, um, uh, Rockdale County did with their Confederate statue. Or we can vote that it goes to, um, the, the city of McDonough's, um, museum. Which would probably be the, the, the most perfect place for it.
Take a vote, again, if there's a matter that requires a vote. But I think the resolution with the, with the, with the qualifications that I added would give management and myself enough flexibility to make some decisions. But if there's a decision that requires the board to act, we would have to bring that to you.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. Um, Commissioner Barn?
Yes, I, I wish that, uh, probably not gonna get anywhere with this, but I, I wish would y'all would entertain a motion that we, uh, table this item uh, until we can have Commissioner Wilson here. I'm sure he, representing District One, would like to have some comments on this matter. Unfortunately, due to his, uh, weather that he's under right now, he just came. So, uh, I'm gonna put that out there. And, uh, I do agree with you, Chair Wood, we need to recognize a lot of other people. And, uh, not sure if everybody really, really remembers Mr. Carter. Of course, it was way before all our time. But that man, uh, there was a bad train wreck. It's one of the worst train wrecks that ever happened in this country. And he, in the pitch dark with no lights, he scratched and clawed, he was a Black man. He scratched and clawed his way to the top of the train tracks. I don't know how, it's probably forty feet or maybe even farther than that. And then he ran all the way to the train station in McDonough to stop the next train. And he saved so many lives that day. We do need to, to look at doing those types of things. But, but anyway, I, I'm just throwing that out there. Y'all will consider tabling this matter. Thank you.
Okay, well, it's been a motion and a second and, um, conversation. Okay, well, it's been a motion and a second and, um, conversation. So, um, at this time, um, we'll now have to take a vote. Okay, so although those in favor of the resolution, please raise my signal in your hand. Okay, so, um, county clerk, will you read that for the record?
Do you want me to read the whole motion back in or just the vote? Here.
Um, Patrick Jost, that, or will you read the, uh, the, the, the resolution that was just voted upon? And then county clerk, will you confirm the vote?
Stand the motion. The motion was to remove the statue from the square within sixty days of today's vote. Um, to hold it pending an appropriate disposition and to authorize, uh, county management and myself to ensure we do it in a lawful manner.
Okay, and the vote, county clerk?
Chair, Commissioner Clemens made the motion to approve. Commissioner Holmes seconded. The vote was four, one, zero with Commissioner Barn voting in opposition.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, all right, well, we thank you. Um, that, um, concludes our items. Um, but at this time, um, county clerk, will you review any, um, comments regarding um, public comments? Do we have anyone that submitted public comments in today?
We did not, Chair.
Okay, okay. So now we'll move into the approval of minutes. Um, um, for May the fifth, uh, which was a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, May nineteenth, um, is a regular Board of Commissioner, or it actually was a call meeting regarding the budget here, and that was at nine o'clock AM. And so are there any changes or revisions to those minutes? Hearing none, seeing none, um, we'll now accept a motion to approve the minutes of those meetings.
Move to approve, Chair.
We have a motion is, and then the second from Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion? All in favor? Please signify by raising your hand. Okay, uh, Commissioner Barn, I didn't see your hand raised on that. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, um, so we, we, we thank you for that. And now we'll move into commissioner comments. Um, so, um, are there any comments? I know I've got some that I need to make. Okay, uh, Commissioner Thomas? If you can unmute your phone, please unmute the phone for Commissioner Thomas, please.
Thank you. I just want to thank this Board of Commissioners for moving forward with their leadership. One of the things I really like that we do, that we try to address concerns before they become a problem. Uh, we've not had huge problems of racism in Henry County that I know of presently. I know that the county has come through some trying times. But at this point in time, we need to address the transitions that are taking place in the county and do them productively. And making sure that all of our citizens know that they are welcome here and that you have a board that listen to your concerns and do address those concerns. Uh, I know I'm still getting emails as I'm sitting here over watching some of them about what we do and how we do things, but we're working for the behalf and the good of the county. Also coming, and I will say was not on this particular agenda, but it shall be on the next agenda by Public Safety Oversight Committee. And there again, that's not because we have a huge problem with policing in Henry County. But we do know that police reform is taking place all across the nation. And so before we are facing, uh, certain situations or certain problems, we're taking initiatives to position ourselves to answer any potential incidents that could come up. So that's coming on our next agenda as well. You heard us talk about our transportation here tonight. And we've moved forward to make sure we got a transportation director in place. That's moving forward and not waiting until an issue come before us and reacting to the issues. But we're looking at determining how do we make sure we're prepared to answer any questions or incidents taken going forward. So I hope those that are watching us and listening to us understand that our goal is not to react to everything, but to look forward and plan to make sure that we represent you well. So thank you so much for those comments, um, ma'am chair.
All right, thank you. Any, any other commissioner before I go? Okay, uh, there's actually about three things I, I wanted to share, and this one is mostly to the public. Um, I do know that there was a public service announcement that went out, um, um, on just before of the July fourth holiday weekend. And, um, it was interesting that, um, I did get a few calls that were concerned about that. And, um, what I, what I would like to say to you as citizens is that one of the responsibilities that we have, especially if we sit in on the Board of Health and working in conjunction with the emergency management team, is to do all that we can to, uh, protect the safety and health of our citizens. Um, so when that public service announcement went out, we already had received information from our hospital that the COVID nineteen, um, diagnosis, those that have been tested positive were entering into our hospitals. And that they were beginning to get concerned of space. Um, whether they had enough PPE and whether or not even the plans that they had to, um, allow elective surgeries was going to have to change. And so the, the message that went out was to encourage us to think about other people and knowing that we had information that we were working with so that if you were to get sick or your family member were to get sick, that we were doing all that we can to make sure that the resources were located here locally so that this thing would not continue to get out of hand. And if you want to, don't believe it's real, this thing is real. But we also are in a position where we can minimize it and control it. And it's a simple matter of where the, the, the face masks. Now, I already know that some people claiming that you're infringing upon my First Amendment rights. And what I say, whatever you do in your home and whatever you do on your private property, that is your, that is your opportunity. When you go into public places, um, we are asking you to do this. So again, we are not trying to bypass, um, any orders and we're not trying to infringe upon individuals' rights. What we're talking about is how do we, as individuals, take every opportunity within the authority that we have to encourage people to wear those masks so that again, the other person is not, um, impacted from death or anything like that. So I just wanted to address that. The second thing is, I know I'm going to get a bunch of phone calls about this. Regarding the decision in my vote regarding that statue there on the square, as you obviously see, my goal is to make sure that we do not erase history. Even though it may be moved from this location to another location, we've got to accept what our history is, as painful as it is. And this issue that is going on in the heart and the mind of people are real. When I spoke to individuals and some of them are white now, I spoke about when I spoke to blacks. People are saying, we just need to move forward the best that we can because we've got to accept that there are some issues that we don't necessarily understand. So that's why my position was, let's preserve the, the statues, let's preserve the history, but let's add somewhere so the whole picture is told. I will tell you that there are some issues that we've got, that, that the only way change is going to happen at the end of the day is going to, is going to have to happen in the hearts and in the minds of people, period, individuals. That is how the change will relit, will continue to happen. Now, continue the conversation. We've got to talk about racism. We've got to talk about anger. We've got to talk about hatred. But what we've got to also think about is how we're going to be hopeful for our future. That is important. And so I would also say that the third thing that I, I just really want us to begin thinking about here in Henry County, we are a mixture of people right now. And we've got to respect each others, even though we don't agree with everything. And so I'm going to be asking staff to, um, actually come and present a resolution to this board because I think what we need here, including, um, not just county representatives, but city, uh, representatives from each of the cities. We've got to develop a cultural and arts strategy on, that is going to allow us to figure out how we're going to blend together. And how are we going to respect each other and how are we going to continue to work on policies that will eliminate hatred? But this committee that I'm asking for is to go and look at where we are now. Identify ways that we can, uh, appreciate our history, but also blend in where we are, but more importantly, to prepare for the future. So again, I'm calling this, um, committee, a Henry County Cultural Arts Committee. And it will include representatives from the county, uh, appointed by county and by city, uh, each of the cities. And to also begin to highlight our history, our culture and the future of our arts here. And this could be a tourist type of attraction that we in Henry County have. I would also say that as part of that resolution, we've got to start planning for our two hundred year anniversary next year. That is a group that could potentially be used on how do we make that meaningful? And a celebrant, celebration of where we've been, where we are, and more importantly, where we're going. So I again, ask staff to present that. I'll document that in, um, through the red folder process, um, that we have so that the staff can vet that and help bring a resolution that makes sense that, uh, if the cities are willing to do it, and if they're not, that's okay too. But at least we're taking some leadership to start talking about all the cultures, not just of the Confederacy, not just of what has happened, um, you know, with the freedom of, 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 of slaves. Uh, but also to talk about, you know, what have, we've got some great people that have done some great things here in Henry County. And we need to highlight that as well. So that, those are my, my thoughts and my, my, uh, points, um, and during the commissioner comments. And I'll just pause and see if there's anything else from any of the other commissioners, Commissioner Clemens?
So two things, um, Chair Wood. One, I want to say that every time we talk about policies or the Confederacy stuff, it's the same thing happened when we dealt with, when, well, everybody put me on the line, then I dealt with the flag. It's not about the race, it's about policies. And I want to make sure that we reiterate this statue is not owned by Henry County, it's on Henry County's government property. So I don't want us to get away from that. Just because we act to follow policies, protocol and do what we're elected to do. And you don't agree with it, people need to stop saying that it's about racism. The statue is about racism, but our act today to remove a piece of property that we don't own from government property is, is lawfully and legally what we're supposed to do as government elected officials. That's number one. Number two, uh, the cultural arts committee that you're talking about, uh, please check with, um, our grant writer because we submitted a grant for the Black Box Theater, um, several months ago. And we had to establish a cultural arts committee. So we do have a Henry County Cultural Arts Committee. Um, and whatever you want to add to that, you and I can sit down and we can talk about what we need to do with that. But we do have that in place. We had to have it in place to go after arts of funding.
Well, uh, thank you for that clarification, but didn't know about it, but glad to hear it's there. And I do think that, uh, I would like to see what it does and more importantly, what it can do, um, more for us in the future. So thank you for that. Okay, um, any other comments or thoughts from the board? Okay, um, so at this time now, um, regarding our upcoming meetings and events, um, on July the twenty first at six thirty PM, there will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. On August the fourth at nine o'clock AM, there will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So are there any other business for the good of the group? Hearing none, seeing none. Um, we do act that again, we continue to pray, um, for all, all of those who are not well. Um, Commissioner, um, Wilson, um, I understand is, is doing better, um, through his pneumonia. And I hate that, um, you know, uh, we, we just miss him and hope that he'll be able to join us very soon. So, um, at this time, we'll accept a motion, um, to adjourn.
Chair, one more thing, I'm sorry, Chair Wood. Can I mention one more thing?
Sure.
Um, um, Deputy County Manager, uh, Johnson, can you please make sure that, um, our communication staff get with me, get with Tucson because we've still yet to, um, get the status of what's happening with Costco's. I know that they are scheduled to sign the contract, uh, Patrick, next week. Costco's is coming to Henry County and there's not been any news about it. Uh, Commissioner Thomas has been pounding my head about D, why we don't have any, um, publicity on this. So I don't know why citizens need to know that we've worked really hard with this business attraction program to try to bring businesses to Henry County. Costco's is huge for us. Um, and so, uh, Deputy County Manager, if you could authorize our, um, public, our publicity department to talk to Tucson, talk to me, we can talk to the, uh, landowners and the representatives from Costco's. But we need to put this out. It's a pandemic and we still have businesses coming to Henry County and that's huge.
We in touch.
Okay, anything else for the good of the group? Okay, we'll now accept a motion to adjourn. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Thomas and a second from Commissioner Clemens. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please raise my signal in your hand. Okay, all right. Well, um, thank you all for the conversations today. And citizens, thank you for tuning in and staff, we appreciate you. And, um, let us know what additional information you need. So thank you all. Have a good rest of the day.